Good evening and welcome to the September 20th, 2023, meeting of the Roseville City Council. Before we begin, I want to ask the city attorney to provide the closed session disclosure.
Good evening. The city council met in closed session with legal counsel tonight to discuss a piece of existing litigation. The case is Marcus Hill-Cobert versus City of Roseville. For the record, United States District Court, Eastern District of California, case number 222 CB, 016 by 1 WBSDB. In session, a report was given to the city council, but they provided no direction, and therefore I have no reportable action. The closed session adjourned at 5:58.
Thank you very much. I'll ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Okay, you want to call the meeting to order now?
Well, we've called the meeting to order. Now we'll call the roll.
Thank you. We'll start off with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Here.
Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Maldonza.
Here.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Here.
And Mayor Haldishell.
Yeah, thanks very much. Sir, in the mountain outfit, or sure, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
As we have time to select the, so thank you for standing up. I appreciate that on such short notice, so. All right. Now I'm going to ask the clerk to announce our meeting procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 20th City of Roseville regular city council meeting. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table to your right and online on the city's website. All comments from the public should be directed to the city council and not to any staff member or members of the audience. All speakers must speak from the podium as this meeting is being recorded. For comments on non-agendized items, members of the public may address the city council regarding any item not listed on the agenda tonight and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Public comments on non-agenda items will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The collective initial period for public comments is limited to 25 minutes. Any speaker that did not have the opportunity to speak during this segment will have the opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting prior to the city council comments. Again, as a reminder, the Brown Act does prohibit our city council from taking action, debating, or discussing items that are not listed on the agenda. For comments that are listed on the agenda, speakers will have five minutes to provide input that should be relevant to the item listed and relevant to the city council. Time will be monitored, and once the red light begins to blink at the podium, we kindly ask that you please conclude your comments. The city council encourages public participation. Please be courteous during the meeting and refrain from cheering or jeering at comments or actions or in any other way disrupting the process to conduct the people's business. Lastly, if addressing the city council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. Thank you for your specific participation and for being here with us at the City of Roseville. Welcome.
Thank you very much. We're going to start the evening with some presentations, and if Matt Bridge would join me at the podium, this is, this is going to be really an honor.
Did you want Mike? I think he's okay.
Good evening.
Hi, Bruce.
Put this down. It's heavier than I thought it was. All right. See if I, where I start here. Oh, yeah. So Sylvia Basana was a lifelong resident who exemplified the meaning of volunteerism, and the award we're presenting tonight is a tribute to her and her lifetime of community service. The annual award recognizes individuals in the Roseville community who display a commitment to community service and serve as role models by inspiring others to make a difference, and who display leadership, excellence, and integrity through volunteer service. Our 2023 Sylvia Basana Community Volunteer of the Year is Matt Bridge. Please join me at the podium. I should have read ahead, so, okay. Obviously, not, you know, tonight's improv tonight, so. On behalf of the Roseville City Council, we congratulate and present you with the following award and proclamation. Whereas Sylvia Basana, a resident of Roseville, a Roseville native, who epitomized the word volunteer, spent the greater part of her life giving to the community and making a difference through her commitment to serve, and the continuation of her legacy will enhance the Roseville community for years to come. And whereas there's no greater asset to the community than the power of dedicated volunteers who give their time and talents to work tirelessly behind the scenes unconditionally, and whereas the impact of one person can be inspirational and far-reaching in benefiting the community, and whereas the Roseville community has benefited from the outstanding volunteerism of Matt Bridge through his long and dedicated service to the Friends of Roseville Public Library, Parks and Rec Commission, and Youth Sports Coalition, it's fitting to be, that he be recognized for his efforts. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Roseville that Matthew Bridge become commended as a recipient of the City of Roseville 2023 Sylvia Basana Community Volunteer Award. Go that way. We've got a lot of, a lot of people with, and then we'll go this way. I know some people up there. Right. Okay. This is yours, and I welcome you, and that's yours.
That's cool.
And I would encourage you to make any comments.
Oh, no, just thank you for the recognition. Really appreciate it and love giving back to the community and hope to do so for many more years. And now I'm going to go run to my daughter's soccer practice to go help coach that. But thank you very much. I appreciate the recognition.
Anything going on at Friends of Roseville Public Libraries on Saturday?
Yes, absolutely. If I could say something. We, if you haven't yet heard, we've got our Tequila Mockingbird fundraiser supporting the Roseville Public Library's summer reading program on Saturday, and tickets are available on our Roseville FOL website. It's literary-themed, cocktails, appetizers, a lot of fun, and all the, everything goes back to the library, so.
And additional question for extra credit, when's the next book sale?
October 7th, Saturday. All right, thank you.
Our next presentation is a resolution recognizing Dr. Phil Osneck. I bet you, you know.
I am.
Yeah. You're not, you're not Phil.
No.
No, but you do.
I am junior.
You are. You do look, you have a striking resemblance to the former mayor, so.
Not as handsome as he was, but.
Whereas Dr. Phil Osneck, Colonel U.S. Air Force retired, and his wife Dottie were members of the Roseville community, starting in 1978 until Dottie's death in April of 2017, and subsequently Phil's death in March of 2021. And whereas Phil's dedicated, dedicated his life to public service, first as a career United States Air Force officer, and later in retirement, paying forward his good fortune and applying his experience and leadership skills to serve the community in various elected and voluntary capacities in Roseville and Placer County. And whereas Phil was an elected official of Roseville and faithfully and energetically served the community of Roseville during the period of explosive growth, growth in several elected positions as Roseville Mayor in 1987, as a Roseville City Council member in 1987, as a member of the Roseville Planning Commission from 1983 to 1987, and as a Placer County Supervisor from 1990 to 1994. And whereas in his capacity as mayor, Phil was instrumental through his work with Amtrak and the Roseville Historical Society in promoting and helping to establish regional rail services for the community. Those services continue today and are slated to expand significantly, greatly benefiting the community at large. And whereas Phil served the community in other voluntarily and voluntary roles, advocating for the rights and well-being of Roseville military veterans as president of the local chapter of Veterans of Foreign Wars, and continued to document, promote, and preserve the rich history of Roseville as president of the Carnegie Museum and president of the Roseville Historical Society. And whereas on June 7th, 2023, the Roseville City Council voted to honor Phil's legacy by allowing the Osneck family to construct a historic memorial marker in commemoration of his service to the community, with a historical memorial plaque to be located at the Roseville Amtrak Station. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Roseville that Phil Osneck be recognized and honored for his love of community and years of dedication to public service.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you. I know, I know you'll have some words, and my colleagues will have some words, but it is ironic that in the next couple of days, we expect to learn of the last bit of funding for the Capital Quarter Joint Powers Third Track project that will expand commuter rail from Roseville to Sacramento and beyond.
It's an outstanding, outstanding service for the community.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bruce. So that was a lot of words on my dad, but Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, city council members, city management staff, Roseville citizens, good evening. I'm Mark Osneck. I'm the late Phil Osneck's son. I want to thank you for honoring Phil this evening by the reading of the resolution into the record that acknowledges his years of public service as a mayor, as a city council member, and in other capacities serving the citizens of Roseville. If Phil were standing here tonight, that would be very interesting, since he has passed away, but he would unequivocally say that he was only just one of many citizens who loved Roseville, the community, and he volunteered to serve, but most importantly, he would say that everyone that has earned the privilege to serve, going back even to 1906, when Roseville was established as a community, contributed countless time, well-considered thought, and unmeasurable energy to make Roseville one of the best cities that it is today. Phil would also say, I think, that public service is tough but rewarding, and it takes a special set of abilities, such as the ability to listen, to be empathetic to the needs of the public, and to balance emotion with practicality, fiscal responsibility, and action. I think Phil would say that all that served have demonstrated those traits professionally. And lastly, I think he'd also say that the hours are long because of long-winded people like me in city council meetings, but perhaps the efforts, no matter the size or scope, sometimes go unnoticed, but in the end, one only has to step outside of these chambers, really to appreciate the resulting beauty and decades of building this community one brick at a time. So I'd like to conclude that I think Phil would insist on recognizing all that have served and that are serving in elected positions, past and certainly present, and extend his heartfelt appreciation for everyone's timeless efforts. Thank you so much.
Thank you for those gracious words. Would any of my colleagues want to add to those comments?
Does it make you want to move back to Roseville? Does it make you want to move back to Roseville?
It's been 105 in Texas for the last three months, so there's a lot to be said here.
I, I know we have a long agenda night, so I'll just say that on just behalf of the council, I'm sure your dad would be very proud of you tonight for doing this, and I know you worked hard to have this happen, so thanks for being here.
Thank you, Chris.
Bruce, I can just add, I was on council, and your dad was on supervisor, and there are many times I was on committees with him, and he always thought about Roseville. He loved the railroad, and I'm, I, he, we always had things and updated on it, and as a veteran, and all the VFW and programs we had here, he was, he was always there, always kept, and how much he loved your mom. He was always there for your mom. It was, yeah, and so it was a privilege to know him and work with him.
Thank you. You do a lot of kind of calling.
It really is a pleasure to have you, and, yeah, you're, those are some very gracious comments, so thank you. Well, we'll move on now to public comments, and as the clerk announced earlier, these are public comments for items not listed on the consent calendar. I have one card. Is there anyone else who has public comment on non-agenda items? Okay, we have Lauren Meeks-Harris, who would like to comment?
Good evening. I know you guys have a long evening, but to make it real brief, I'm going to do a shameless plug for the City of Roseville, is I, if you have not, and I'm, of course, one of the newest residents here, if you have not, please go check out the YouTube for the State of the City address. I think it's one of the best that I have seen in the region, particularly this year. And if you would like to know the history of Roseville, it was very, I actually read the speech, then saw it, had to reread it again, but it was something that I believe everybody, and I know in the audience this evening, we have Roseville high school students, and you guys should go check out this city, the State of the City on YouTube, maybe to get some extra credit points. But in the meantime, please, like I said, I believe it was one of the best, and it's like the mayor said, we got this, so have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Any other folks that want to make public comment on non-agenda items?
I just have a question. Is there?
Get up the podium.
Could you come to the, right here?
I was just wondering if there's like a printer that I could use?
I'm sorry, a what you could use?
A printer.
Oh, okay. I don't think, so, I think most of these folks have, are here, and our printers are shut down, so. All right, thanks. Next, we'll go to the consent calendar. I'll ask the clerk to announce the procedures for approving the consent calendar.
All matters on consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of the city council. There will be no discussion on consent calendar, calendar items unless a member of the city council staff or a member of the public requests that a specific item be pulled for further discussion. At this time, neither council or staff has made such a request. Is there any member of the public that would like to pull an item for further discussion tonight?
We have public discussion on 9.2. I don't know if this is the proper timing.
No, we'll have that up later.
No one come up to, or requesting to pull, Mr. Mayor, for consent tonight, the city council will consider approving items 7.1 through 7.22 on the consent calendar. In addition, the record will reflect that Councilmember Albert will be recusing himself on item 7.10, as he has a conflict due to owning Microsoft stock. So the record will reflect that he will be abstaining on the vote for that particular item. There is nothing further. At this time, may I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Maldonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishell.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to resolutions. The first one is item 8.1, Torrente at Sierra Vista Community Facilities, District Number One, Public Facilities Bond Issuance. And with us tonight is our Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, Dennis Kaufman.
Mr. Mayor, Haldishell, and council members, the purpose of this agenda item tonight is to authorize the issuance of bonds for the Torrente at Sierra Vista Community Facilities, District Number One. A little background, the purpose of setting up or establishing a community facilities district, or CFD, is to create a land secured financing mechanism to construct or acquire authorized facilities or for the provision of services. This particular CFD was formed in November of 2021 with a maximum authorized indebtedness of $30 million. The bond issue that's recommended to tonight has a not- The bond issued that's recommended to tonight has a not-to-exceed-principle amount of $9 million. The authorized facilities that can be financed with these bonds include the authorized facilities listed on this slide, including transportation improvements, including sections of Baseline Road, Sierra Village Drive, Market Street, as well as utility infrastructure, parks, and open space. This map comes from the recorded boundaries of the district. The district is north of Baseline Road and west of Market Street. So the staff recommendation tonight is to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds for Torrente at Sierra Vista, CFD Number One, and approving the related actions and documents, including the form of the preliminary official statement which is used to market the bonds. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council members?
No.
All right, we'll open up for public comment. Anyone have public comment, close public comment, inquire of the council, has thought of any additional questions or comments?
No questions.
I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you. Thank you. On item 8.1, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-384, a resolution authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for and on behalf of the city of Roseville, Torrente at Sierra Vista Community Facilities, District Number One, otherwise known as the Public Facilities. Approving and directing the execution of a fiscal agent agreement, approving forms of preliminary official statement, bond purchase agreement, and acquisitions agreement, approving sale of such bonds, and approving other related documents and actions. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Ricucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishel.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Next up, we'll have ordinances. Ordinance 9.1, Dry Creek Greenway East Phase One Trail Project. Always love a ward of contracts, not so much budget adjustments, but awards of contracts.
Good evening, Mayor Haldishel and members of the council. My name is Jason Shikowski, and I'm your Public Works Director. I'm pleased to bring before you tonight a request to award a construction contract approving funding for the much, and approving funding for the much anticipated Dry Creek Greenway East Phase One Multi-Use Trail Project. Joining me tonight to provide the details of this request is Stephanie Kamen, the Department's Engineering Division Manager. So Stephanie?
Thank you, Jason, and good evening, Mayor Haldishel and members of the council. The Dry Creek Greenway East Multi-Use Trail Project is proposed in the city's general plan and bicycle master plan as a vital component of the city's trail system. The Dry Creek Greenway is an excellent alternative modes project which will eventually connect Roseville to Granite Bay, Folsom Lake, and ultimately to the Sacramento County Trail System and downtown Sacramento. It is Placer County's version of the American River Bike Trail. It will serve as a recreational trail and will allow users to ride and walk between places of employment, education, medical appointments, worship, and many other points of interest. When completed, it may in fact be one of Placer County's finest examples of a vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions reducing project, and it will go a long way in helping Roseville reach its goal of being a premier healthy community in the Sacramento Valley region and continue to solidify Roseville as one of the best places to live in the country. This map depicts existing and future multi-use trails throughout the central area of the city. Black is existing, purple dashed are future, and blue dashed depicts Phase One, the subject of tonight's request, of the three-phase Dry Creek Greenway East Trail. Phase One includes improvements from the existing Sogstad Park Trail at Darling Way to the existing Midu Park Trail at Rocky Ridge Drive, totaling just over two miles. Further east, Phase Two will continue the trail out to Old Auburn Road, and finally, Phase Three, in partnership with Placer County, will construct the trail improvements out to Sierra College Boulevard. Phase One is anticipated to be the most technically complex phase of this trail project. Phase One improvements include the connection to the existing Sogstad Park Trail at Darling Way, widening of the bridge and undercrossing of Darling Way, a parking lot at the trailhead on Riverside Avenue, bridge crossings of Dry Creek, Kirby Creek, and Linda Creek, undercrossing of Interstate 80, connection to Eastwood Park, undercrossing of and connection to Sunrise Avenue, at-grade crossing of Oak Ridge Drive in connection with the existing Sierra Gardens Trail, and at-grade connection to the west side of Rocky Ridge Drive and the street-side trail connection to Midu Park. Staff have been working on this project in earnest since prior to 2008, and public engagement since that time has included a wide variety of outreach, including hundreds of direct mailers to all residents and businesses a minimum of a quarter mile from the proposed trail, as depicted in the map on this screen, presentations to a variety of stakeholder and neighborhood groups, and recent broadcast and print media coverage in the local news, to name a few. This past June, council approved the plans and specifications and authorized staff to call for bids. Subsequently, staff bid the project for six weeks, from June 27th to August 8th. There was extensive engagement from contractors during this period of time. Staff received and answered over 85 questions regarding the project and ultimately received four bids. All bids received exceeded the engineer's estimate, with the low bidder, Anvil Builders Incorporated, coming in approximately 25% higher than the estimate. Although all bids came in above the estimate, the lowest three bids are within 4% of each other, which is a very strong indicator of accurate bids. The project construction funding is provided by approximately $17 million in grant funding, which includes congestion mitigation and air quality, or CMAC funds, solution for congested corridors program, which is SB1 funds, and an active transportation program, or ATP grant. The remaining $12.4 million comes from local transportation funds and a small amount of environmental utility water rehabilitation funding for utility work that will be done in conjunction with trail construction. Local transportation funds come from the state out of their share of sales tax and is provided to the city to use for operating our transit system and for other improvements like bike trails.
Thanks, Stephanie. So tonight, staff is asking, recommending that council award the project to the low bidder, Anvil Builders Incorporated, for $24 million and authorize a 10% change order authority, and to adopt an ordinance for a $10.6 million budget adjustment consisting of grant and local transportation funds to fully fund project construction. With council approval of these actions, construction will begin in October and be completed by the summer of 2026. That concludes our presentation, and we are available to answer any questions.
Does council have any questions of staff? Not a question.
No questions.
Okay. I'll open up public comment. Anyone have a public comment? Come on up to the podium.
I'm Sandy from Placer County, and it sounds really wonderful to have this increased methods of transportation, bike-wise, but in this day and age right now with crime the way it is, sometimes these routes are used by individuals that are not, okay, criminals. Sorry, trying to say it right. Anyways, but that's my concern. I don't see anything that talks about like trying to increase, you know, policing of these areas. Are there hours that these areas are going to be open or closed? Is anyone looking at that possibility that other people that shouldn't be using those areas are going to be using them? Again, given the current social economic climate? Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on this item? Mr. Shikowski, could you answer that?
Yeah, I'll attempt to answer it. I've listened to the police chief talk about it quite a bit, so what adding a bike trail to some, a lot of the areas along the creek are actually places where the unsheltered like to hang out as it is. What adding a bike trail does is it makes it easier for the police to access those areas and deal with any issues that may occur. So when I've talked with the police chief about this before, he said he feels it actually is a benefit to have the bike trail so they can actually actively police that area as needed.
Great. All right, unless there's any other public comment, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council, see if they have any comments or questions. Councilman Albert?
My wife and I this year have kicked off our main exercise is biking, and I have been just so extremely pleased about our trail system in Roseville. I wasn't even aware of a lot of it, and we've been all over the place on our bikes. And I'm really excited. I think this is a fantastic process. It's really expensive, unfortunately, but I think this is going to be wonderful to just allow our community and other visitors to really enjoy moving up and down in our area. So thank you.
Any other comments? Yeah, I'll just dovetail. I've mentioned at previous council meetings, you know, I use a trail and from my house near Topgolf, all the way out to Winding Creek and then back, and went past the Fittiman, the original Fittiman Orchard that's out on our trail, so it is a wonderful way. I know a mayor from an adjoining city that also starts with the letter R likes our trail system a lot, and he's a distance runner, so they are assets, and I know the last couple of weekends I've walked the Dry Creek Trail from here out to Cosmo, the statue, and they're very active on, you know, and that's, I think, sometimes a deterrent, deterrent to folks who are in the unsheltered world because they probably like to, they probably don't like the fact that folks are out there, but anyway, that's my observation. So I'll ask the clerk to read the motion. Oh, wait, one more second. You know, what's that? I'm sorry.
Did we do public comment?
We already did, and we closed it. The other item, you know, I made the comment that I don't like budget adjustments, but we are in that world, right? And so, you know, we, everything is a budget adjustment, not just for us, but, you know, in everybody's personal lives as well, so things are more expensive, so ready to get this thing going.
With that, Mr. Mayor, on item 9.1, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-374, approving an agreement by and between the city of Roseville and Anvil Builders, Inc., and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the city of Roseville, and adopting ordinance number 6710, authorizing certain amendments to the fiscal year 2023-24 budget, and declaring this ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriation measure. With that, if I can please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Ricucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishel.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Next up is 9.2, Roseville Municipal Code Ordinance Regarding Syringe Exchange Programs. Our police chief, Chief Bergstrom, and Travis Cochrane from our city attorney's office will provide the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Haldishel and council. I'm Travis Bergstrom, your chief of police, and with me is Travis Cochrane at the city attorney's office, and we're here to talk to you tonight about an ordinance related to syringe exchange program. I will tell you, this isn't an ordinance I ever thought I would come talk to you about, but recently our hand was kind of forced in the, in the matter of this ordinance primarily because of a application that was made through the California Department of Public Health for a private vendor to provide this service along with a variety of other services into Placer County, including in the city of Roseville. As a little bit of background, syringe exchange programs are permitted under California law, and they allow for the distribution of sterile syringes and collection of used syringes for the purpose of combating the spread of infectious diseases. Those programs may be authorized by a city, county, or directly by the approval of the California Department of Public Health. The application that has been made to the California Department of Public Health is exactly in that manner. It is something directly through them and is not something that's been proposed by anybody here in the city. If an application is made to the California Department of Public Health, then they are required to consult with local law enforcement regarding that program and their application to operate in the area. On August 7th, at the police department, we received this notification from Public Health that a group called Safer Alternatives Through Networking and Education, otherwise called SANE, had applied for this authorization to conduct a syringe program in Placer County. Their application has a variety of things that are in it. The one that I keyed on and immediately was the syringe program. They have a variety of other things that are in the program that include some addiction services, other testing for HIV or hepatitis C, naloxone distribution, fentanyl testing, all those kinds of things are part of this program, but the one that I keyed in on when I received the application was, was syringes. And they provided what I will call a loose framework for what this program was going to be, and it included home delivery of clean syringes and pickup of used syringes, delivery and pickup requests made through a dedicated phone line, and the hours in which this would happen. As we reviewed this application, both at the police department and with the city attorney's office, I had a number of concerns with what this application had in it. As I mentioned, it was fairly loose in how it was defined. It didn't really define what home delivery was. It didn't really define how they were going to pick up things and deliver things. It talked primarily about a home delivery system for syringes, and yet had an extensive piece of their application related to homeless. A lot of their, their application just was rather loosely defined for what I was wanting to see. Some of the services that they offer, that they're going to offer to our community, they actually don't offer in our community. They offer them in Sacramento, which are not, if, if they are viable services, are not very viable when you put them in Sacramento, and we have our community here in Roseville. One of my bigger concerns was a lack of what appeared to me, any accountability in how this program would work, on how they would manage it, how they would, would account for what they're picking up, what they're delivering, where they're delivering it. And then the final piece for me, the application included some information about what appeared to be community outreach, listed several of our Roseville neighborhood associations, and I'm confident that none of that community outreach actually happened. Some of the other pieces that were in there that concern me, we work every day at the police department with Placer County Health and Human Services. Any kind of a program that, that falls in the line with any of these things that are proposed in this, I would take great value in what Placer County Health and Human Services says about it, their guidance, their advice. We work with them every day. I'm also confident that this program did not reach out to Placer County Health and Human Services before they submitted their application. So for all those reasons, we had quite a concern with what this, this application was. Between the city, city attorney's office and myself and one of my captains, we drafted a letter that we submitted to the California Department of Public Health, objecting to this program being implemented in our city. I outlined all the deficiencies with it I just mentioned to you in this letter about how we objected to this program, and I sent that into them on September 4th. So far, the only response from public health that I got back was that they got my letter, but other than that, they have not identified anything else. They haven't answered anything that are any of my concerns for what this program is. And so, and as Travis is going to get into us, I won't take too much of the information he's going to share. Our take on this is that I don't want this program in our city. I don't think it benefits us. I think there's significant concerns with it. The other piece of that is the California Department of Public Health can approve this over our objections, and so the ordinance that we brought tonight is a way to try to restrict that, even if they do approve over the objections that we submitted in our letter. So I will turn it over to Travis to talk about that.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor, council. Again, Travis Cochrane, Deputy City Attorney. It's a pleasure to finally be able to present before you. I wish it was under different circumstances, but this is the situation we've been placed in. I want to be very clear on behalf of myself and chief and staff that what this item actually is and what it is not, because I know there's a lot of information swirling around, and I want to correct some of that information so we're all operating on a level playing field. Chief, myself, and staff, we are opposed to these programs. We're strongly opposed to them coming to our community. We're not inviting them. We're not welcoming them. This is not to allow them to come to Roseville. Again, we're not condoning it. We're not welcoming them to here. This item is to regulate these types of programs and minimize the negative impacts in the event the state forces them upon us, and that's despite our objections. As Chief alluded to earlier, under the public, or under the Health and Safety Code, CDPH has the authority to approve these programs irrespective of local bans or other laws, and so they can essentially force them upon local cities whether or not we object or oppose. Now, we understand the county and other cities have taken other actions. They've adopted what they call these outright bans. However, we've reviewed that option as well. We've reviewed it quite in depth, and we simply don't believe those are enforceable. Those, there's, they're not prohibited from enacting those ordinances, but under the state laws of preemption, we don't believe they're actually enforceable. And so as opposed to bringing something before council tonight that we know is not enforceable, we wanted to propose something that we actually thought could potentially regulate and offset the negative impacts in the event, again, the state forces this upon us. So opposed to just impacts in the event, again, the state forces this upon us. So, opposed to just adopting something that we can't do anything with, we wanted to offer something that would really be the only way that we can have a local voice or a local way to offset some of the negative impacts that could be brought if this is, again, forced upon the city. So, currently, the municipal code does not address needle exchange programs. So, if SAIN's application was approved, they would only be subject to the requirements of state law and any conditions that CDPH decided to impose. We don't have any idea what those conditions actually are or what they may be. We haven't been provided any of that information yet since CDPH is still in the process of reviewing the application. And so, the proposed ordinance, again, tonight is intended to regulate those additional areas to make sure our community stays safe, or to the extent that we can, try to make sure our community stays safe in the event CDPH does force this upon us. And really, the purpose of the ordinance is twofold. The first portion is to ensure compliance with state law for any of these programs that are approved by CDPH, and the second portion is to oppose those additional local regulations, really regarding the operation of the syringe exchange process itself, both the distribution of the, the syringes by the program, and then also the disposal of those syringes once they are used. So, the key features of the proposed ordinance, all exchange programs are prohibited except those that are authorized by state law. Again, CDPH is authorized to implement these programs despite our local objections. So, this is not inviting any program that wants to operate. This is saying everything is flatly prohibited unless you have sought that authorization from CDPH, and CDPH has approved it. The syringe programs are prohibited from being operated within 600 feet of any public or private school, daycare center, playground, public park, community center, or library. The only exception being is if the program services are essentially offered on a private residential property. That could still occur within 600 feet, but if you're within a developed park, community center, or something like that, that is actually prohibited to engage in those distribution services within that 600-foot radius. Program operators must give a participant a disposal container or ensure that that participant already has a authorized disposal container so that they can immediately dispose of used needles after they are used. Program operators are prohibited from providing clean syringes to participants who are known to improperly disposed or, known to have improperly disposed of used syringes. Again, there's a prohibition so that if the program operators know that certain individuals are improperly disposing their syringes in violation of the state law and our local ordinances, they would be prohibited from allowing that participant to continue to receive them. And the last three are similar but slightly different, but they all deal specifically with the distribu, I'm sorry, the disposal of these used syringes. Syringes must be immediately disposed of in a proper container immediately after their first use. Syringes cannot be left in any place or manner where they could come into contact with someone. You can't leave them on the ground. You can't leave them in the park. Basically, you can't litter your syringes. You have to dispose of them properly in an authorized container. And used syringes cannot be disposed of in regular trash bins, recycling bins, toilets, sinks, et cetera. Again, this goes back to, there has to be absolutely proper disposal of all used syringes that are provided through these programs. So, again, as, as I started here, this is not a, a welcome invitation to these types of programs. This is a, in the event CDPH decides that they are going to approve SAIN's application or other applications they see in the future where services are being offered in Roseville, this is a way to actually have a local voice and a local impact on that because CDPH can require us to allow these programs to operate here. And these bans that we are hearing about, put simply, they, they may not be enforceable, but this is a legally defensible way to make sure that the impact to our community, which we understand is likely a negative impact, that we can minimize that and offset it to the degree that we can. So, again, the recommended action tonight is to adopt the urgency ordinance adding Chapter 9.90 to Title IX, and then also introducing for first reading an ordinance adding Chapter 9.9 to Title IX of the Roseville Municipal Code.
And I will also tell you, just in closing, it is my intention, whenever Department of Public Health does respond to our, our objection letter, to continue objecting to the program in whatever manner I'm allowed to, whether it's more in writing, whether it's in-person meetings, whatever options I'm given once they respond to my first letter. It's my intention to continue objecting to SAIN's application for this program in our city.
And if I may, just piggybacking off of what Chief just indicated, the CDPH has a portal where they accept public comments regarding these programs. So, SAIN's application is currently pending. You can go onto the CDPH website where it is pending, and there is a link for community members to provide comments. So, if there are individuals, and again, we are all in opposition to this, but if the community also wants to actually take a stance against these sorts of approvals, there is a way to do that through CDPH's portal, and we would encourage everyone to go on there and voice their concerns about these programs coming to our community.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Cochrane. I know we have a lot of questions up here. So, Councilman Elverd, would you lead us off?
Yeah, I know we're in a, we've got a huge agenda tonight, and we do want the public to be able to speak, but I do hope the public's listening because sometimes I think a lot of information was shared that might answer a lot of questions for people. So, we're basically saying, we're not going to allow any needle exchange programs except those that we legally can't stop. Correct?
That's correct.
And then, for those that are forced on us, or, you know, there's only one organization that can do that, then we have as much teeth in it as we can to try to control it so that it works with our community if it's forced on us. But otherwise, they're not allowed. Correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I just make sure that's clear. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor Bernascony, Councilwoman Rakucci.
No, I think this is a, a good way to go, that we do as much local control and watch the health of our community as much as possible. And the fact that you wrote a letter and you'll be following up on that, I think that's excellent. And also, that you mentioned that there's a portal that, that people could voice their concerns to the people who actually are, are doing this is a good thing.
Councilmember Madonza.
My questions have been answered, but I probably want to reserve the right for some comments afterwards. And do we know if the, an individual representative from that group is here tonight?
Now, we'll find out under public comment.
Okay.
I did have a few questions. So, the 45-day comment period, if it started on August 7th and ends September 22nd?
Midnight on the 21st, or I should say 11:59 PM tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
So, tonight or anytime tomorrow would be a great time to submit public comments.
So, that portal that you mentioned for public comment will close tomorrow?
Yes, it closes at the end of the day tomorrow.
There's a difference between a syringe and a needle. Is that correct?
Technically, there is a difference. The way that the Health and Safety Code defines them for purposes of syringe service programs, it's synonymous. They define a hypodermic needle as the syringe and the needle, so the terms almost become interchangeable.
Okay. And you mentioned California Department of Public Health programs. So, pharmacies have syringe exchange programs, I assume, or?
I, I don't know if the pharmacies operate as an exchange program. They may, but you can essentially go to a pharmacy or their licensed physician and purchase syringes from those types of organizations or establishments.
I have diabetes, and I need a syringe.
Yes.
I likely have, you know, that access.
Option already exists, and people are immune for prosecution for basically the statutes for paraphernalia. I mean, it is legal in California to possess a unused needle and to properly dispose of those used needles after they're used.
You use the term residential property. I think of that as being expansive to include just land versus an actual structure. Is there, is property a term of art that actually includes a physical structure and address? You said residential property.
Yes, and I believe it may be further defined in the ordinance itself, but the intent is for a developed residential structure or property.
I appreciate your strong statement that we object to this, right? And one of those was a physi, a physical address could be a park, right? It could be, it doesn't necessarily have to be what we traditionally think of as, as a residential home.
But that is, the distinction is that, under the application, they just talked about basically home delivery. And under the state regulations, a home is open to interpretation. So, it could essentially be anywhere. Somebody considers their home to be wherever it is that they're living. And so, the distinction we are trying to draw is that if you are going to try to receive these services within 600 feet of one of the sort of banned sensitive areas, that can only occur if you are within a developed fixed residential structure.
Okay. If we adopt this urgency ordinance tonight, would that be potentially incorporated into the California Department of Public Health's decision on this application?
But it will be. It's certainly something that we intend to bring up to them, to discuss with them. Again, there's ongoing, at this point, they've just solicited comments from us. We hope that after the public comment period closes, they'll engage in some sort of interactive process so we can talk about our concerns, but it's certainly something that we intend to bring up and press upon them.
You mentioned the, the, in 2021, the ability of locals to exempt themselves from that changed. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
Yes, that's correct. So, for a long period of time, the, the legis, the statutory authority for CDPH to approve them essentially says notwithstanding any other law, which we interpret as any other law, this legislation preempts that. In addition to that, there used to be, in the Code of Regulations that was adopted, sort of facilitating how these programs work, there used to be a requirement that when somebody would apply for a program, they would check a box that basically says any program operated would be subject to local ordinance. CDPH then wrote a memo to the legislator essentially saying this is inconsistent with that authority, notwithstanding any other law. And so, the legislature then changed that and removed that requirement that anything be subject to local ordinance, which we interpret as the legislator clarifying that the authority for CDPH to authorize these programs preempts all other local ordinances that are inconsistent with the statewide concern being addressed by these needle, these syringe service programs.
And so, that would apply to a general law city? That would apply to a county, a school district? I mean, those are loc, local jurisdictions. Is that correct?
Yes. So, local jurisdictions who would adopt ordinance that are inconsistent with that would essentially be preempted. There are some minor exceptions, one of them being charter cities who operate under the home rule doctrine. So, charter cities have supremacy for all municipal affairs. So, as a charter city, the city of Roseville can actually adopt regulations that are inconsistent with state law as long as they are specific to a municipal affair. The one thing the charter city can't do is adopt an ordinance that's inconsistent that addresses statewide concern. And so, the ordinance that we have tried to prepare today is one that specifically addresses the local aspects, the local impacts of these types of programs. We are not saying, we're, we're not trying to address the statewide concerns the state is trying to do, which is basically combating the spread of infectious disease. We're not saying you can't do that because I think that would be inconsistent with what is a, a statewide priority. We are saying we are addressing the specific municipal affairs, the local impacts that may be created by these programs if you force them upon this.
What did the county, Placer County adopt? What did the Board of Supervisors adopt?
My understanding of the ordinance that was adopted by Placer County is essentially just an outright ban. This has no programs, even those approved by CDPH can be operated within any area of the county.
You're stepping on my line here. For how long?
I, I have to look back at the ordinance, but I think their urgency ordinance is short-term to allow them additional time to evaluate.
To October 27, 2023.
Yes. I believe that's the timeline. Yeah, so it's a, it's a limited one to give them the option to evaluate additional regulations.
Thank you to the council for allowing me those extensive comments. We'll open it up for public comment. I'm sorry. I think we'll just open it to public comment, and we'll, you know, recognize that I have three, and there may be others here, who want to speak on this item. And as you speak, if you've heard someone say something that you, you align yourself with that, just say, I align myself with Ken, Bill, Mary, whoever. So, we're going to start with Angie Nakal, Angie Nakal.
Angie Nakal.
Nakal. I have, okay. All right. We, we, I'm sorry.
Go to the next one.
Yeah. We received an email, and we received, I should say, we received a number of emails today. The council's received it, and I know I responded to Heidi Harrison and had a conversation with her earlier today. Next, we have Chris. Okay. And, there you go. Okay, Chris.
Hi, I'm Chris. How much time do I have? Three minutes?
Three minutes.
I don't want to take it all, but it probably will go that way.
See, a green light?
Yes, thank you.
And then a caution light, and then a red light.
It's the first time I've ever spoken to you. It's really an honor to be here. You are the people that we name our schools after and our streets after, and I'm a graduate from warranty Ike 78 and Oakmont 84, excuse me, 84 Ike. Anyway, I'm a little nervous because I usually don't speak like this. I want to commend and thank our fire, our police, our police chief for his recommendations with the city attorney. Also, I stand entirely behind what we're trying to do with this. It's, it's well researched. When I'm hearing the statements, I'm kind of imagining a little bit like the Titanic when Jack Dawson says, I'm going to write a stern letter to the White Star Line. I think we're kind of sinking on this a little bit. And, you know, I heard statements like that we, it may not be enforceable. And I've heard the attorney speak about the law and how we're up against the law. And, you know, we, it's, it's the attorney's duty and responsibility to follow the law. So, he's not going to say anything but the will of the law, and that's very important for us because we're a law-abiding society. But the will of the people overwhelmingly, and you are the people too, we're all people here, are outrageously against this program. And we're doing the best we can to figure out strategies and a system to at least grab the bull by the horns. They're at our county line, ready to come in. I went to Del Paso Heights today and visited the SAIN organization, the dispensary, all the things that go on there. They operate three hours a day, five days a week. They weren't operating this morning, but I talked to staff. I talked to a woman named Sarah, who is a dinosaur wrangler. She's a paid part of the staff, and we talked very confidently about what's going on and the humanity that they're practicing in trying to alleviate the misery and help homeless and indigent people. We have a lot of transients, a lot of homeless here, and you know that. We're all trying to accommodate these people. She's telling me that people come in and they take the needles and they take them out to Elk Grove and other places, and I think that's going to happen here if we invite these people here. They're, they're going to come from all out the county. I'm a little bit saddened that we are not expressing the will of the people by standing with our county and, and hold the border at Placer County. We're just kind of following this law. I heard the phrase, may not be enforceable, and we haven't heard back. And I just don't know what the urgency is right now to open the gateway and welcome the program in. It's saying, we're saying, we don't want you to be here, but open the door, come on in. I say we keep the door locked for a little bit. I don't understand where the urgency is right now. It's taking effect immediately. Please, fools rush in, calm down a little bit. You know that the federal government says no to cannabis. You know, it's, it's horrific Schedule I. And on our Tuesday and Wednesday nights, you can smell it everywhere because California stood against in the law of lesser magistrates against California. It said, no, we're going to take care of our people that way. And now we have cannabis everywhere. We, the people, the council that we have represented here can stand in the authority of the people and at least postpone this ordinance and say, no, not in our town, not in our city, and still have an open heart for the suffering that's going on. We have a lot of transients here and a lot of people walking around, but how many needles is it going to take on a Tuesday or a Wednesday when we close down Vernon to, for people that are running out of time? Anyway, I think you get the gist of what I'm saying. And I'm saying, please suspend this ordinance because we're opening a door. Please, Chief, say what the urgency is. Tell us why we're making this door open right now. Keep the door shut. Allow us to formulate a plan with the county and watch what happens. Don't give up on the county. Don't give up on the people so easily. Thank you so very much.
Justin Masters.
Can I respond to any of those comments?
We'll respond to it after all the public comments are made.
My name is Justin. Hi, my name is Justin Masters. Just yesterday, there was an article that came out, and the statistics said that there were projected to be over 800 deaths from overdoses in San Francisco just this year. It was based upon the January through March numbers of 200. The prior, let me get the title right, former president of the San Francisco Board of Supervisors, Angela Alioto, who served during the time that Gavin Newsom was mayor there, admitted that they had made several mistakes. She says today, it is not safe anyplace in San Francisco. It is partly because of the homelessness, the drug use, and, and the enabling of the drug use that allows people to come there and continue their habits. It is not It is not compassionate to go ahead and facilitate the enabling and continued abuse of drugs, ultimately arriving at the point of death. The Narcan, which the proponents say is helps them, is just a temporary stopgap on the slide down to where they're, it's basically a supervised death. There's been, I'm not wanting to point out your comment earlier, you know, you pointed out that there was a lot of legal things that can be done, but legal doesn't always make it right. And there are plenty of, I mean, there's no widespread comments or complaints about drugs and needles going on here. I want to focus on the comment that he pointed out as well. By saying no, the comment, and I'm hoping I'm not going to misrepresent you here, by saying no, may not be legally defensible. May not. But by adopting something, it's opening up the door to being accepted. There are, there is state law that tells school districts that they must have safe spaces for children to express themselves in non-binary methods or however they want to classify themselves for the day. They're allowed to be protected there. But school districts have been standing up against that. They've been passing local rules with regard to their school districts. And the courts are finding that, yes, they have a right to, parents have a right to be involved with their own children. We have a right here to say no to enabling of abusive programs. I urge you to vote no, to make a stand, to be against this completely. It may not be defensible. It may be. I'm asking to keep the door closed. Thank you very much.
Those are all the slips I have, but is there any additional public comment? Come to the podium.
Hello, I'm Jonathan Cannell. I do a lot of development of housing in Roseville. And I really just had a question, hearing the presentation. And I will address the question to the council, but I'm not sure if the council will be able to answer the question. But one of the points that was addressed in the presentation was that the applicant for this program, I think they were called Sane, they claimed to offer testing for these communicable diseases, but they were offering them in Sacramento and not in Roseville. And in the event that Roseville were to move forward with this proposed ordinance 9.9, there was nothing in the presentation that suggested that these groups would be in any way compelled to offer these services in Roseville. And that was certainly a point, you know, against the viability of the proposal Sane was putting forward in the first place. And I was simply wondering why that was not addressed in the proposed ordinance 9.9, why if they are going to offer these services somewhere, they wouldn't be required to offer them here in order to operate whatsoever here.
I saw another hand come podium.
Hello. My name is Roxanne. I'm from Placer County. You know, earlier Stephanie was showing pictures of this family riding along the path, riding their bicycles so peaceful and lovely amongst the green grasses, and really painting a picture of what you've spent $16 million to have Roseville look like at this small project that's going on. One of the things that she said, quote, "is to solidify Roseville as one of the best places to live in the world." What we're talking about now is in direct conflict with that picture that we're trying to paint. And to me, I look at it and I said, this is pure hypocrisy. Which one is it? Are we going to have needles littered through those $16 million pathways, parks? And I thank these guys for fighting. We need to fight because this government was not created with top-down authority. We've misunderstood our constitution if we think that's what we're dealing with. We're a bottom-up authority. We matter. This is the city and the county, and we are the people. We decide the laws of the land. Now, what's gotten very confused through COVID is that we keep getting top-down pressure for vaccines, for CDC, from it's coming all the way down and it hits the cities and the cities go, ah, jeez, we're left holding the ball. What do we do with this? We write a letter. But we have to do more than that. That's great. It's a great start. But when you have a top-down government literally doing something to support illegal activity, and we're trying to remain a lawful society, what do we do with that? We have got to push back. That is our only choice on that. And by the way, that's called tyranny. It's also in the Constitution. Illegal drugs are illegal. We have, we're talking about garbage and syringe. You know, I went, I was walking on the beach and there were so many syringes on that beach, I don't even think you can go barefoot on the beach anymore. So that's probably the start of handing out free needles. And then it's a great idea, yeah, you know what? We need you drug addicts, please, because you're so damn responsible, to please put your syringes back in the little container and throw them away properly. And do you really think that we can hold accountable Sane to the fact that somebody doesn't do that properly? How do we possibly maintain that? It's a great start, but it's not enough. We have to get our head on our shoulders and remember, we are the people. Which starts here. Thank you.
If there are others who want to comment on this, please queue up. Okay?
Hello, thank you everyone for being here. And I'm Diana Seokan, resident of Placer County. I am a business owner in the city of Sacramento. I see a difference between Placer and Sac County. It is light and dark. Light meaning Placer, Sac meaning dark, in my eyes. I choose to live here in Roseville because of how unsafe it was living in Midtown on 13th and G. I lived there for 10 years. I have experienced a man in my front door injecting himself with needles, and he exposed himself to me. And by God's grace, my husband and I bought a home in 2018. We left Sacramento. My husband, who is from Spain in Romania, says that he is shocked as how much homeless and drug addicts we've had in California. That doesn't exist in Europe. I've experienced just being unsafe, and I think this, regarding this code, the Syringe Exchange Program, I'm standing with the sheriff, police departments, and support in requesting the city council to pass ordinance not to have the program in our area. There are many gray areas that have not been addressed, and I don't feel this could be, should be funded or go in any further. Thank you.
My name is Lily Guero. I've lived in Roseville for the last 35 years, went to Roseville High School. I love this area. I love this community. There's nowhere else I would rather be. But it breaks my heart to see the changes that are knocking at our door. I parked in the parking garage here, and I heard what sounded like someone was having some sort of party. And I looked over the concrete wall and I saw young people, high school age, getting stoned out of their minds. I'm not even sure when I go back to my car if they're going to be okay. Drug use is illegal. We know this. Yet why do we want to ignore the obvious, which is to assume that people who are addicts, that they are already breaking the law, that now all of a sudden they will follow the law? It seems very illogical to me. And if our government, our local government, is showing them that we're contradicting what we're saying, that we know that illegal drug use is bad, that it's harmful, yet we're saying, here, over here, it's okay. How is that not sending mixed signals? And I would like to see some data and some stats on where this has been implemented, and what is the evidence that it's worked, that it's done any benefit? I can only think of one place, which I think we can all think of, San Francisco, that has implemented this, and how is that going? I don't, I would also like to see and understand why this needs to happen right away and this can't happen after the fact, if the state does force this on Placer County. Why do we need to jump the gun and rush into things? I've always seen that rushing into things is, tends to bring people regrets. So it would be good to know, to have this information, because this is crucial. This is crucial. We're dealing with people's lives. And I would also like to see information on how are they going to handle when someone is helping someone to administer these drugs, that it's not going to take their life? As we know, drug addicts, they tend to lie. They don't tell the truth. So if they're already taking, have other things in their system, and then they come into this safe place to get injected, and then someone helps them with that, and now they die, how are we helping society? How are we helping the community? I don't understand. None of this makes sense to me. None of it makes sense to me. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Those will be our last two speakers on the public comment.
Okay, Sandy here again. Yeah, I just want to echo all these concerns and comments that are being shared with you about this situation. I too heard something about these bans in other areas not being enforceable, may not be enforceable. I too have that concern. Why jump the gun when we don't know? May is not, is not certain. So why, why jump the gun? I believe we should follow suit with our Board of Supervisors in what they implemented just this last, well, a week from last Tuesday. Even though it's temporary, they are going to be looking at other areas that have instituted these programs to see if there is data that shows that they're working, but I really don't think they're going to find that. I also heard the word forced, that the state would force something upon us. How is that constitutional to be, have something forced on us? Why are we using these terms? I mean, that's, that is not American. That doesn't happen in the United States, but yet we're talking about it like, like it's nothing, like it's, it's been normal. But it's not. It's not normal. We should not be forced into anything like this. So please reconsider this. I believe we should follow suit with the Board of Supervisors in banning, and even if it is temporary, but I don't think that this is the right choice to do this urgent passing of this, of this idea here. So please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Delora Alva, and I am against this as well. I, Wayne Wu wrote a four-page letter, but I just wanted to give this information here that he has in this letter. It's, it says, "Historical information does not support the efficacy of SSPS. Sane's executive director, Shiloh Jama, who is the Syringe Service Program, SSP administrator named on the application, is a lifelong drug user himself, who was formerly the director of the People's Harm Reduction Alliance, PHRA, in Seattle, and has spent his career advocating for drug users, not against drug use. In 2017, he was head of the U.S. most extensive needle exchange program, handing out 34 million syringes and having no account of how many syringes they collected in exchange. Millions of unaccounted syringes are on the street, in the parks, and in the community. Sane now expects to distribute 200,000 syringes annually in Placer County, and their estimated, estimate to collect 200,000 syringes is not supported by any empirically evidence of past practices. In fact, while they keep a strict account of how many syringes they hand out, they only collect data on pounds of used syringes waste collected. This is clearly an opaque figure that lacks the transparency needed for public officials to make informed decision on programs that directly impact the citizens of this county." And that's just one sentence of four pages that I read, that he had written, and stated that they are not going to accept it. So I'm asking that we do not accept it as well. Like I said, I'm a grandmother, and I'm a mother, and I've lived in the community for many years. So I just, I'm thankful for the fact that we can talk about this, and I just hope that we can not accept it. Thank you.
Should have been in line. I'm going to allow this, but no. I asked people to line up.
I'm sorry.
You give one minute.
Really quick, I would just like to say that, how is this, is this program, how are they doing it in Beverly Hills or Marin County? Is, are they doing these kinds of programs? Something tells me they're probably not. And I, please, do not proceed with this. Give us some time to process all of this information. Many people are just made aware of this today. So thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. I will bring it back to the council. We'll close public comment. We'll bring it back to the council for additional questions and comments.
I've, maybe our city attorney, assistant city attorney, I mean, do you want to provide a high-level education on laws? You know, unfortunately, like, we decide the laws of people. I wish that that was the case, that we decided the laws, but unfortunately, that's not the case. And, you know, we have, we've consulted with our city attorney's office, with our police chief, on what would best protect our city, which is what we all want to do. So I guess I'd just start with, like, the whole law, you know, about how, I don't know if it's how laws are made, but we, if something's enacted, our requirement to follow that? I have a loaded question, but I wish we made the laws, is what I'm basically saying.
Yeah, and I think the question that you're getting to is how does preemption work? And it's basically that the agency with more supreme authority, they adopt laws, and the agencies that are under their authority, if you try to adopt laws that are inconsistent with that, those laws are then preempted, and the higher agency is going to have the ultimate authority over that. And so the federal government, the United States, adopts laws that apply generally to the, to the entire USA, and then states have authority to adopt some laws, but to the extent they adopt laws that are inconsistent with federal authority, those state laws are preempted. They're not enforceable. And then the same thing applies to us as local agencies. The state has certain authorities, they adopt laws, and if we adopt laws that are inconsistent with those state laws, our local ordinances are thereby unenforceable. There are certain exceptions, like I mentioned earlier, charter cities enjoy the home rule doctrine, so we can adopt some local ordinances, even if inconsistent with state law, but they have to be specific to matters of municipal affairs. Anything that is of statewide concern, that is preempted. And the definition for statewide concern is fairly broad. It can be even something of a regional concern. And so again, the statewide priority that the legislator indicated when they allowed these syringe exchange programs is to combat the spread of infectious diseases. And so they're saying, we're going to allow this because the spread of disease is a priority. We want to limit that. And so if we try to adopt an ordinance that says, we don't care about that statewide priority, we don't want it to happen at all, in our interpretation, that is inconsistent, that's a statewide concern, and so trying to prohibit that would be inconsistent with that state law. And so what we have tried to do with this ordinance, as I talked about earlier, is create something that allows us to regulate in addition to other state regulations so that we can actually have an impact, because at the end of the day, the state has said, notwithstanding any other laws, not with any local ordinances, you're allowed to operate these programs if the Department of Public Health says they can operate these programs. And so we're trying to fill in the gaps to make sure that if CDPH, despite our objections, says you can go ahead and do this, we want to have something in place so we can enforce it to the extent that we can. enforce it to the extent that we can.
Thank you.
Sir? Sir, please. Please, right. I mean, we're going to have a conversation. I think I'm going to start with, and I'm going to go to Councilman Alver. And please, keep the decorum. Councilman Alver.
So City Council hires and fires two people, the city manager and the city attorney. They report directly to us. And I would stack up our city's legal team to the county or any city nearby. That's my particular belief. They've protected the city, and our city's operated very smoothly based on the legal advice that we get from our city attorney's office. And anywhere they're short, they get outside advice. They provide us with a lot of protection and a lot of wisdom. I'd like to say we're wise on our own, but we're not. We need legal help on this. We currently do not have an ordinance regarding this. And we have a company that's wanting to come in and bring a needle exchange program into our city, and we don't like the way it's set up. We don't have an ordinance against it. What this is giving us is an ordinance to stop it, say, "No, you don't fit the deal." The state's not currently trying to impose any program on us. But like we say, legally, that's a whole nother discussion, but that's not what we're here for right now. We're trying to create an ordinance so we can automatically rule out programs that we're really uncomfortable with, and basically saying, "Only what the state brings and forces." And I know you don't like that topic, but it's not an issue right now. They're not trying to force anything. I'm personally not interested in making a political statement against the state here by deciding this. I want to put up a legal enforceable ordinance that lets us protect our city. Very appropriate. I think most of what many people were saying is actually covered by this. But I am not interested in doing something that our legal department is telling us is not a wise idea by just banning, because that's illegal. So I'm very supportive of the ordinance, the way it's presented to us.
To woman, Rakuchi. Any comments or questions?
I think I just want to look for the best protection for our cities. And not saying anything, I don't think, fits that. I think that our attorneys and our police department looked at ways that, if that came to be in our area, that we have strict regulations for them. I'm not interested in the syringe exchange, and I'm not interested in just not doing something. I want to make sure that we're in a position that we're protecting our community. And I see this as the way to do it.
Councilmember Mendanza.
I am not in support of this, but having heard what our chief and our legal counsel has said, I feel like we need to do some, this, what's before us tonight, at least gives us our control. It puts us in control of our destiny. It allows us to say, "No, this isn't consistent with what we believe as a city, what our residents want to see." It's inconsistent with just our belief system and how this city operates. My fear is, if we don't do this, and CDPH comes down at some point, then we have nothing in place. It's like we have a fence with no gate. And at least this is a temporary stopgap. And even if you want, I think stopgap is probably the wrong word, but this gives us some defense. And it's not what I want. I'm not thrilled about it, but I feel like it's the lesser of two evils. So.
Sir? Sir, please.
But I don't, I am strictly against the syringes and the exchange program. I think this is a bad idea. But as our attorney explained, we can't predict what the state is going to come down and impose on us. So we need to at least have something prepared for when and if that happens.
Vice Mayor Bernascony.
Short of passing this ordinance tonight, what are our options for waiting for the state to make a ruling?
Well, that I don't know.
What are the pros and cons of that?
I think the intent with this ordinance and doing it now is, is my anticipation is that at some point, CDPH is going to reply, more than just, "Thanks, we got your letter." They've indicated that they would set meetings with us, but the comment period for this has not ended yet. So my anticipation is, at some point here, once that ends, then they are going to do what they said they were going to do, which was get back with us so we can set this meeting, we could talk about the concerns I outlined in the letter I gave them. The hope with an ordinance that has rules behind it is that when that happens, in effect, we can box out this application, because there's differences between what we're trying to do and what that application is. The application for that program, I agree with you and everyone else, I don't like that program either. How do we keep it from coming to our community when we know if we don't do anything, that the state, CDPH, can approve it anyway? And so you can put together an ordinance that the intent of it is, is when hopefully I have this meeting with them, I can then show them, "This is what our city is restricting these to," and it, in effect, eliminates that program, can't answer the questions or can't meet the restrictions that we have in our ordinance, and then goes away. And so that's what the intent on having the ordinance is, is so that we can have that in place when that happens. So the hopeful part is that we can defeat that individual program from coming into our city. If we don't have any rules, then we're just going on the, "We don't like this, and these are the reasons we don't like it." By having an ordinance that we can fall back on, then we can lean back on that and say, "And this is our city ordinance that prevents the program from coming if you don't meet all of our rules." And so that's the intent of the ordinance, is literally try to box this program out when we get to that part with CDPH.
Do you anticipate us revisiting this after they make a ruling?
As far as the ordinance goes, or?
As far as the state coming down with the ruling?
As soon as I hear from what it is. I mean, this is something we've been in, at city government, and have been in conversation about for the month-ish since we got the application. So we've been talking about it a lot. I'm just waiting on what is that next step.
Okay.
And if I may, just to add to that, one of the issues that we have is a timing challenge, because CDPH doesn't operate pursuant to any necessary timeline. They just have prerequisites, conditions that they have to meet before they can make a decision. And one of those is just soliciting comments, and the public comment period, as I mentioned earlier, ends on the 21st. And so theoretically speaking, anytime after that, CDPH could make the decision. And so if the ordinance is not in place by the time they made the decision, should they have approved the application, then we have nothing in place. And the issue there is, it's very hard to impose regulations on something that's already approved after the fact. That creates a whole host of other legal issues. And so to answer part of the question of, "Why is there urgency?" And I know that term is also used because that's what the ordinance is called, because it's a legal term. But part of the reason of doing it now, prior to the public comment period expiring, is it locks in the restrictions prior to CDPH having the opportunity to approve the program, again, despite our local objections, because if they did that before we did anything, it's very hard to implement regulations after the fact to something that's already been approved by the state.
Thank you for that.
I wanted to pick up on Vice Mayor Bernascony's conversation, question about, you know, the separation of powers and authorities, right? So we don't have a jail here in Roseville. We don't have a court system here. That's run by the county. Health and Human Services is run by the county, correct? Right? So that, you know, they have different authorities than we do here. The state has different authorities that oversee public health, that they interact with the county on, right? So we have a different, we have different jurisdictional authorities and powers. Chief, you've, you're not siloed. You've had conversations with your fellow chiefs, Ian Rockland and Lincoln, and maybe even Sheriff Wu on this topic, I assume?
Correct.
Okay. Just like with the sexually violent predator, there was a lot of conversation that went on.
Correct.
And there was a lot of decisions, you know, on how best to move forward to protect the interest. Folks, I'm just going to tell you, none of us up here like the loss of local control. None of us. It happens on a lot of things, and we have a law and regulation committee that actively, the vice mayor is on, and council member Mendanza are on for things like land use, where they're telling us, "By right uses," and other things like that. Do not, do not think any one of us up here want to give away local control. We want to protect you. And if we do not pass this ordinance tonight, our voice is silent. Our voice will be silent. We are putting in place safeguards for this community. I want to ask Mr. Cochran one question. You mentioned charter cities. We are a charter city.
Yes, sir.
Why don't we just do, for 45 days, like the county did?
Yes.
An exemption, and come back and revisit this in 45 days?
Yes.
We are a charter city, so we are, if I heard you saying this correctly, we have more power, constitutional power, than Rockland does or Lincoln does. And I guess I should have known the answer to this question, but what did Rockland do? What did Lincoln do?
My understanding that Rockland and the city of Lincoln mirrored essentially what Placer County did, and that was an outright ban on all programs, even if approved by CDPH. And, Mr. Mayor, to go back to your other question, and again, I hate to have to give this answer, but the reason that we have not recommended that is because of the idea of preemption. And even though we have authority over municipal affairs, the state has made it very clear that combating the spread of infectious diseases is a statewide concern, is a statewide priority. And a ban banning all programs from operating is essentially antithetical or contrary to that statewide priority. And so while we can regulate aspects that are municipal affairs, that are local issues, doing something that is inconsistent with that statewide priority, those are not things that we have home rule doctrine over. That's not what the charter allows us to do. And so that is why the recommendation has been made to attempt to regulate the local impacts, the municipal aspects of these types of programs, again, in the event that CDPH forces this upon us.
Last part, one more time.
In the event that CDPH forces this upon the city.
Okay. Look, I'm going to, you know, I'm going to say it how we discussed it at home, in our house. We don't want our, we don't want to be walking our dog, our 10-year-old golden retriever, and have her curiosity end up with a needle in her nose or in her paw. We don't want our children. And what you've outlined here, if I'm hearing you say, "This is our line in the sand and our protection against sane or insane."
Insane.
Coming to town, I'm going to ask, I'm going to support that, but I'm going to ask that, if we have an opportunity to revisit this.
Yes.
Because I'm unclear. All I know is, when I read very quickly, that what the county did was put a pause for 45 days. They didn't do anything. They didn't, they have an urgency ordinance that says they'll come back October 27, 2023, after reviewing things. And if they're under, the county's under, the same preemption that you're telling me general law cities and charter cities are under? I mean, they're going to have to pass something like we passed, I believe. I mean, talk me, you know, disavow me of my beliefs if you'd like to, but that's where I am, so.
Mr. Mayor, I don't disagree. That would be our interpretation. But again, we can't guess what the county's going to do. We don't know what conversations they're having.
You're too lawyerly for it. Come on. I mean, we are, we're protecting our residents by adopting this ordinance. So I'm done with my comments and questions. So, Madam Clerk, I've lost my place, so bring us back into, I'll ask you to read the motion.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, on item 9.2, the City Council will consider adopting ordinance number 6717 of the City Council of the City of Roseville, adding chapter 9.90 to Title IX of the Roseville Municipal Code regarding syringe exchange programs, and declaring this ordinance to be effective September 20, 2023, as an urgency measure of the City Council of the City of Roseville, and simultaneously introducing for a first reading an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Roseville, adding chapter 9.90 to Title IX of the Roseville Municipal Code regarding syringe exchange programs. May I have a motion to approve and introduce?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor with the second, Mr. Ray Roca, with Vice Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Councilmember Alver.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendanza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Houda Shalt.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your public comments. We share your concerns. Next, we'll go to special requests, reports, and presentations, and we'll pause for 15 seconds while the room clears a little bit. It's 10.1, a report on the 2023 Neighborhood Cleanup Summary. We're going to, we're going to move. Do we have order in the chambers, please? If you want to have a conversation about the previous item, you can go on out into the lobby. We're going to move on to the summary of our neighborhood cleanup. Good evening.
Good evening, council members. I'm Devin Whittington, Assistant Director with Environmental Utilities. I'm joined here with my colleague, Brian Craighead. We just want to highlight a partnership that was forged over the past few years with Arcona, who's represented out here in the audience, and I'd like to pass it off to Brian Craighead for a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Houda Shalt and members of the council. My name is Brian Craighead, Refuge and Stormwater Manager. As Devin said, we're here tonight to give you an overview of the 2023 Neighborhood Cleanup Now, the purpose of these events, where they allow residents to discard large and bulky items that have accumulated in the neighborhood around their houses, think things that won't fit in their garbage can. And as Devin said, this is a partnership between the city and Roseville Coalition of Neighborhood Associations, better known as Arcona. Now, the background, the previous Neighborhood Cleanup Event started about 20 years ago, and then it started again in 2015. Those were funded by council discretionary funds. We relaunched it last year in 2022 to address the residents' needs for discarding those large items. And we relaunched it because it was in alignment with three council goals listed there. Now, the event details, we had these, we held these events at four different locations throughout the city on three different Saturdays this spring. We accepted waste from 8:30 in the morning to 2:30 in the afternoon. The types of items we accepted were mixed waste, think household garbage, oversized items were the main thing, this furniture, mattresses, things like that, and then also electronic waste, such as televisions and computers. Now, these events were well-attended. We had over 1,300 residents served, and we collected over 260,000 pounds of waste that would otherwise have been lying around houses and backyards and everything. You can see there on the chart, the vehicle counts per location, dumpsters hauled, tons of waste, et cetera. Now, as I said, this was a huge partnership with Arcona. They did a lion's share of the backend work. They secured the locations and volunteers. They were able to gather about 140 volunteers, and cumulatively, over 405 volunteer hours, it was probably actually more. A small example of some of the stuff they did was they assisted with the event facilitation. All those volunteers helped get items out of vehicles and into dumpsters. They fielded numerous, numerous calls, communicating with the residents on everything from what types of waste they could throw away, to where the events were closest to them. Really was that backend support there. All the feedback we heard from these events were, "It was extremely convenient, easy to dispose of bulky and hard-to-dispose items." And also, we heard the importance of these Neighborhood Cleanup Events, which is addressing the needs of older residents and those with transportation challenges that can't necessarily make it out to the landfill to throw all this stuff away. And most importantly, it reduces the trash buildup in the neighborhoods and keeps the city looking clean. So we do plan to continue these events in the future with Arcona for 2024, and we're constantly evaluating new locations to determine ideal venues. So to sum it up, the 2023 Neighborhood Cleanup Events were a success. We had a high resident participation and positive feedback. And most importantly, I'd like to thank Arcona for their dedication and support. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Brian, does council have any questions regarding the presentation?
No.
All right. I'm going to open up for public comment. I don't, Matt. I don't, Matt.
Oh, yeah, we got, we got.
Hi, I'm Melinda Sermani, representing Arcona, Roseville Coalition of Neighborhood Associations. I'd first like to thank you. They sat down with us numerous, numerous times, phone calls constantly, to make this a real smooth event, which it was. So I want to thank you guys for that and the staff that worked with you. They're a great team to work with. We look forward to working with them in 2024. We especially want to thank, we thought it was 120, 140 sounds better, Arcona volunteers that came from different neighborhood associations. We were in contact with the high schools. We had high school students. We had Gathering Inn volunteers. And we even had the chief of police come out and help us out as a volunteer. This is just one example of what we do to work alongside the city, not only the police, the fire, the city staff, other kind of departments with the city. This is an example of how Arcona works with the city, and that's one of our main reasons. We oversee 20 active neighborhood associations, so we're hoping to gather more neighborhoods on. But that's what we do to facilitate neighborhood associations to work alongside the city. And so, and then lastly, I'd like to thank the city. We couldn't have done this without the city because we were granted that money to have this event, and we really want to thank you for allowing that to happen. And in 2024, we're gonna have another event, and we're just looking for locations right now. And we will notify residents of when that happens. Pay attention to your utility bills coming after the first of the year, and we'll notify you when that's gonna happen. So bring your junk. Thank you.
Are there public comments? I'll close public comments. Inquire if the council has any additional questions or comments. Councilman Albert?
Yeah, I got to participate in the one at St. John's Church, and it was fantastic. It was very well organized. There were very long line of cars. And I just remember being impacted with a comment. So many people made comments about, wow, this is such a cool thing that the city is doing. Or, we helped my neighbor get all the garbage out the side yard that's been sitting there for years. And a lot of elderly people had friends helping bring stuff. And it was just a neat, positive program, and I was really excited. It was just fun to know that our city was doing this and just making residents so excited about it. So thank you for all who was involved in that.
Thank you for the update, and thank you to our Arcona partners. City can always count on you guys, so we really appreciate it.
And just aside, I actually sent my husband with some of the things that we needed to get rid of, but I had him take our grandson with him because I thought he needs, gonna need help taking things out. They went to the one at Socks Head, and there were people that were pulling things out for them. And they were just surprised and saw how much other people that were there that were bringing things, and so much how helpful they were, and what a big difference it makes in communities in our neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you for helping keep our neighborhoods visibly nice when people's garages are up.
I'm sorry, was that it?
That's it.
Okay. I align my comments with Vice Mayor Bernuscony. I mean, this partnership is really what community is about. So thank you very much, and excellent presentation, so. Thanks. This is information only, so we'll go on to the next item. Our next item is our Roseville Municipal Code Amendment for Graffiti. And we've got, you see Attorney, it's the Travis Cochran Evening, evidently. He's back, and with our Development Services Director, Mike Isom.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, Mike Isom, Development Services Director. With me tonight is Yuri Zinzun. This is her council debut. Yuri is a code enforcement inspector who's also our graffiti coordinator.
We can hear it, yeah. What? I thought it was my hearing.
I don't know, I'm not the tech, not the tech guy.
Lean in.
Lean in.
Lean in.
Oh, there you go.
So, okay, I will speak louder, too. You know me, I can talk loud. Again, Mike Isom, with me is Yuri Zinzun. She's a code enforcement inspector who's also our graffiti coordinator. Yuri is new to the position, about a year now has been in this position, has been doing excellent work. We're here tonight, oh, and Travis, of course, back up for more. We're here tonight to present some changes to the municipal code as it relates to graffiti abatement, changes that will make that process more efficient for us. We'd also like to take the opportunity to update you on the program, share some successes over the past year as a result of some of the structural changes we've made in the program. Yuri will talk about that. But I'll go on to the next slide, please. Just talk a little bit about what's happened. Obviously, as you know, the council identified in its 24 strategic plan a priority to strengthen blight and graffiti enforcement efforts. That was a particular priority for the council. And since the fiscal year 23 budget, we've made several changes to the program. The first and most important is we assumed responsibility of graffiti abatement from the police department, so we moved that into the Code Enforcement Division of Development Services. Code Enforcement is now the clearinghouse for all graffiti complaints, so any graffiti complaint should be coming through Code Enforcement, and then it's dispersed out to other departments. And Yuri's gonna talk about that process. As you know, you also approved additional resources for code, additional code inspector position, which is actually Yuri's position. That was last budget year. You approved resources in our budget to hire vendors if we need to, to clean up graffiti. We haven't had to dip into that too much. We typically use city forces to clean these issues up, at least on the public property. And then also funded a new position in the attorney's office, Travis's position actually, to deal with public safety issues and code enforcement nuisance abatement. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Yuri at this point, go through some of our successes and what the program's been doing.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Yuri Zinzun, City of Roseville, Code Enforcement, Graffiti Coordinator, Abatement Program. Basically, my process is when we receive a complaint from a citizen or an anonymous complaint, we have 48 hours to respond to the complaint from acknowledgement of the complaint. At the time of the complaint, I do go out to the site reported to verify the asset, take pictures of the graffiti, and disperse any graffiti abatement requests, whether it's public property or city property. Currently, the abatement request for city property is 48 hours, and private property is 10 days, given that I am able to make direct contact with the property owner at the time of my visit. If there is no direct contact with the property owner, we mail a courtesy notice, and we have to allow three to four additional days to allow the mail process time, so that extends the abatement expectation to 14 days possibly. And at the time of my visit during inspections, if it is a city property, if it is something that I can abate myself, I go ahead and take care of it also. I do have graffiti remover, paint, what's needed to cover any abatement or any graffiti that is at City View. Currently, since we've taken over the project since October, we've had, I've responded to a total of 183 graffiti complaints, and that's up until July. The graffiti complaints consisted of 132 public properties and 51 private properties. Of course, it varies in types and size and location. The graffiti on, sorry. So since July and till today, during the summer, we've had an increase in graffiti complaints. So obviously, a graffiti concern is visible. Since July, I've responded to a total of 73, 76 new complaints, for graffiti complaints. 56 of those complaints have been on public property. Public property consists of parks, open trails, bike trails, utility boxes, city buildings, parking lots. So whenever something, any graffiti is detected in the area, I contact open space, streets, depending on the department the asset belongs to. And with that, I would like to share some photos of some of the graffiti cleanup. Example here is 336 North Sunrise. This is behind a commercial building. There is extensive graffiti. Next slide, please. 336 North Sunrise. And there is the cleanup. So obviously, improvement. And it is considered a hotspot in this area, so it is a repeat area where I am visiting, requesting abatement and compliance to maintain a clean, safe environment for those visiting the area. Next slide, please. This is 900 Orlando Avenue. This is visible from I-80. This is also a hotspot. We've had several complaints, several cleanups efforts, and communication with the property owner. Next slide. And that's the cleanup. And again, this was just one visit that consists of extensive graffiti along this property that is visible from I-80. This here is the bridge facing Atlantic Street and the Vet Hospital. Busy area. This also is a hotspot area, consists of various visits, proactive visits to make sure that it stays clean. And that's the cleanup. This here is Westbrook and Loveland. This is a new community, new area. This graffiti was on the bridge of Westbrook. Next slide, and the cleanup. This is off of South Grant and Atlantic Street. This is a USPS postal drop bins. This is a hotspot as well, continuously is vandalized graffiti. Constant communication and efforts with USPS to make sure that they stay on top of maintaining those bins clean. Biners Ravine Trail. This is along Sierra College Boulevard, also a bike trail, pedestrian trail, before and after cleanup.
And at this point, thank you, Yuri, for that. At this point, I'll hand it over to Travis, who will go over some of the changes to the ordinance.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Good evening again, Mayor, City Council. Pleasure to be here. And so, as Yuri has talked about and shown, we've had a lot of success in abating graffiti on public property, and even a lot of success in getting voluntary compliance from private property owners. But one of the things in addressing a lot of these issues over the past year, we've identified, there's just, there's current gaps in the municipal code. And the big reason for that is the existing version of the graffiti abatement ordinance was adopted back in 1990, and it's only had minimal revisions since then. And it focuses on aspects like regulation of spray paint and pursuing recovery against the person who commits the graffiti. But the cost recovery provisions, they're somewhat outdated and they're very extensive. So it's almost more effort than it's worth to actually pursue those in some instances. And really, at the end of the day, it offers limited enforcement of actual anti-graffiti provisions. It doesn't do a lot to deter graffiti conduct. And so we sat down and we thought of like ways that we could enhance the ordinance to offer broader regulation, broader oversight, and really act as a better deterrent for those who may be committing graffiti within the community. And so it really does three sort of broad overarching things. Again, as I mentioned, it's broader regulation of graffiti and graffiti implements, and it sort of expands upon what you can commit graffiti with and prohibits you from utilizing those tools. It requires removal of graffiti from private property within a reasonable amount of time after you've received notice. It clarifies that violations of the ordinance can be penalized or enforced administrative citations. And then it also allows the city to more easily pursue recovery costs against those that actually commit graffiti within our city. And I'm gonna go over a couple of the key features on the next slides. So as I mentioned, it really strengthens the purpose, the purpose section of the ordinance to really closely align with council-stated goals to deliver exceptional city services through prompt abatement of graffiti. Really, we want it to serve as a deterrent. We want the public and the community to understand that the council is taking this very seriously, that it's been made a priority, and that we're gonna be actively enforcing these types of regulations. It also expands upon the definition of graffiti to cover other types of common graffiti implements, so not just spray paints, but we're also talking about broad tipped markers, the really big fat markers, carving tools, etching creams, which is kind of like those caustic or acidic materials that they use to etch into metal, and paint sticks, which is essentially what it is, is paint in a stick that you can write on. It's almost like spray paint. The proposed ordinance prohibits minors from professing, prohibits minors, that's a lot of Ps in one sentence, from possessing graffiti implements if the possession is for the purpose of defacing public property or committing graffiti. So again, it's not just the mere possession. It is if they actually have the intent to deface public property. And really, the reason for that is when you sort of catch people in the act. So maybe you don't have somebody necessarily spray painting in the moment, but if they have all the spray paint cans and it looks like they're about to start, then based off the totality of the circumstances, you could issue an administrative citation, whereas now, we couldn't enforce that. Number four, it prohibits the sale of spray paint and etching creams to minors without consent of a parent or guardian. It prohibits any person from placing graffiti on public or private property within the city. Again, that's a general anti-graffiti provision. It prohibits people from possessing graffiti implements for the purpose of committing graffiti, again, sort of the intent aspect. And then it also prohibits property owners from allowing graffiti to remain on private property for longer than 72 hours after notification of the existence of the graffiti. It allows the city to abate graffiti on private property if the property owner consents to the abatement, agrees to reimburse the city for its costs, and agrees to waive and release the city from liability. And again, the intent of this is not to become the graffiti abatement vendor, per se, or to actively use this, but we have run into situations where some people are just not capable of removing the graffiti in a manner within 72 hours. And so we've come up with an additional option where it's like, look, if you don't have the forces to do it, if you don't have the ability to hire a contractor, you're not sure how to go about it, you just don't have that sophistication, the city can step in and do that for you. You're just gonna be responsible for paying us for the cost and everything else. So it's a cost-neutral type program. The proposed ordinance also clarifies that any violation of the chapter, the anti-graffiti ordinance, is punishable as an administrative citation, infraction, or a misdemeanor. So that gives us additional enforcement mechanisms, all the way down from an administrative citation, which is handling it administratively, up to potential misdemeanor prosecution. So when we do have our city prosecutor office up and running, we could potentially impose misdemeanor penalties against individuals who violate the provisions. And then the last key element is it establishes a process allowing recovery of abatement costs through graffiti abatement lien. And this is really an accelerated, simpler way to recover costs against someone who's caught committing graffiti, especially those large instances of graffiti. There's actually a lot of costs that go into it. And this also allows you to cover, recover law enforcement costs and other things like that actually involved in the criminal prosecution. It can be opposed against the person actually committing the graffiti, or if that person is a minor, the lien can actually be placed against the property of the parent or guardian of that individual. And while we currently have that in our code, the one we operate under now, it's a very challenging process to follow. And this is more simplified, more streamlined, and is authorized under state law. So with that, the recommended action is to introduce for a first reading the ordinance amending chapter 10.53 of Title 10 of the Roseville Municipal Code. And of course, if you have any questions, we're more than happy to answer those.
I ask council if they have any questions about the presentation. Vice Mayor Bernuscony?
Thank you, Travis, for the information. Two questions. In your report, you mentioned that the property owner, private property owner, has basically 72 hours after they received notification. What happens if they don't do anything? I would imagine then the fines start coming in?
Yes, so if they didn't abate within the 72 hours, that's when we would be able to issue an administrative citation.
Okay. Then it says that you would only abate the graffiti if they consented to it, so.
Yes, so that's for the city abating graffiti on private property.
Right.
So if it's on public property, of course, we just go out and abate it. But we only offer this program if it's on private property. They have to give us consent to actually enter their property and, of course, work on it.
You cannot do that without their consent.
Yes.
You have to just continue to fine them.
Yes, another option is if they didn't give us consent and there was a problem, we could go to court and get like an abatement warrant or something like that, allowing us to do that, but that's a much more complicated process, which is why we wanted something, a sort of a stopgap, where we may be able to work with the property owner so we could abate the graffiti on a more expedited basis.
And then I would imagine that this happens with the police department. I think it's called the SEPTED, is like when they go in and they, for hotspots, for those property owners, private property owners, police department goes in and does kind of then, I invite. then, I'm a fireman or review, right? Like that's happening as well, right? Where they say like to cut back bushes, add lighting, all those things that would hopefully help, you know, make them not want to discourage them from doing that. So that's still happening too?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, all right. The cleanups look great. I love a good before and after.
Councilman Albert?
I just had a question on how does a parent give consent to a minor? I didn't see the wording for that. Can they give, have like a permission slip, get him permission to buy paint, to paint his bike or?
The intent is for a parent or guardian to be, a parent or guardian to be present with the individual when they're, when they're buying it.
Okay. We don't need to specify any of that. I was just looking at it, couldn't figure out how in the world they give consent. So it's like, hey, I give consent to my kid, yeah.
I don't think they can buy it without a parent there.
Yeah, and it's mere state law. So some of the provisions in here are consistent with what state law already requires. We just wanted to make sure that we could also enforce that locally. Presumably, a person could write a permission slip for their individual. I remember when I used to buy spray paint as a kid because we'd have home projects. My dad would always go with me, and that's how it was done. So that's what we were sort of envisioning, but there's probably another way that it could be done, and it's sort of up to the store owner to understand this person actually does have consent, and I've verified it to some reasonable degree.
Thank you.
I do. Do you, have you, how often do you ever catch the people who do it? And how many are minors versus adults?
Well, it's not code enforcement that does the catching. It's the police department.
That's not, that's not your department.
No, we're, we're, we're there to clean up the mess after the fact.
I'm even interested in making sure that they have to clean it up themselves. Yeah, I, I, you know, because, you know, they, they, they're have all this ball, you know, lots of fun running around and destroying property. I think they need to have it in their face. I mean, they put it out there.
I have a program for that.
Enforcement inspector, if a surveillance video or footage, any photographs of it being done in the act, if it's forwarded to code enforcement, we do file a online complaint with Roseville Police Department, and Roseville Police Department takes over the investigation. So that information is provided to Roseville Police Department.
Yeah, I just want to give them more than a citation and make them pay for it.
Appreciate the sentiment.
Because they'll just, they'll just do it over and over again.
Yeah, I appreciate the sentiment, and I think in practical terms, you know, we would have to supervise that for one, and we want to make sure there's no damage down to the public facility, publicly owned facilities, and there's high voltage equipment too that's involved. So I mean, there's a whole host of other reasons, but I completely agree with, with the statement.
I'm one who calls our, finds a lot of graffiti when I'm driving around, and so I, I'll take pictures and send it to people, but I, I just think that there's got to be consequences with these people. They, for anything like that, they don't, they don't seem to really learn just by a citation. It's a slap in the hand, they don't care. Another question, how about working with like big organizations like Union Pacific? Or if you see something, are your relations, you talk to them, or how does that work?
I am in contact with Union Pacific as they are their own entity. They have a separate graffiti abatement program, process. We do not have permission to access their property or abate any graffiti for them as of right now due to liability issues.
But do they listen to you, or if they see, if you point out some graffiti?
It, it, it depends if it is a safety hazard, and they respond promptly. If not, it, it's, it can be a lengthy process.
I've seen the same graffiti in, on a building on UP property for two, three years.
Yes, off Tiger.
Yes.
Yes. Still currently.
We'll ping them again.
Still currently working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Member Mandanza?
I am thrilled, because I know you're probably tired of hearing from me. I'm constantly calling in.
Next to me, we must be, we must be.
Between Pauline and I, I think we're the lion's share. Our size of town tends to be magnets, because we have a lot of empty buildings, and large walls of those empty buildings tend to be magnets for these graffiti people. But my question is, and I can think of a couple instances over the last couple of months where this has happened, the seventy-two hours after we notify them, they have, that's the time they have to respond to fix it or to, to abate it, right? They have seventy-two hours after we contact them?
So just to clarify, if it's private property, they have ten days to abate the graffiti. If it is public property, it is forty-eight hours.
Okay, so that's even, that even clarifies my question more. So on the ten day, there's been some instances recently where we have buildings that are owned by people outside the state and sometimes outside the country, and making contact with them, we don't have updated information, and it's a lengthy process. So what happens if we go beyond this ten day? I mean, is this something that we could do and bill them? Because technically, they're supposed to have updated information, right? They have alarm permits, they have other permitting items within the city where they should be notifying us of any change of ownership or possession or things, right? So if we don't have that, we should be able to go in there, right?
Well, this is the issue of private property concerns, where if we don't have a property owner's permission to enter the property, then we can't just, without a judicial warrant, without a, an abatement warrant, we can't just enter the property and abate the graffiti.
Like that one, the bank that I'm sure you're familiar with on Douglas, that we just recently had to go reboard those windows up again, and the graffiti before that. I mean, that was a lengthy process. I'm just, I'm just worried that even though we're putting some teeth behind this ordinance, and I couldn't be happier about that, by the way. But does this really do anything to speed up the cleaning and the eyesore that that graffiti creates on that building?
I think nine out of ten situations where we have graffiti on private property, we do get a pretty good response from property owners. There, there are the one-offs, the ten percent that, that take longer than others. We have the tools in the toolbox such as the administrative citations, it can go all the way to a compliance order, and if it's egregious enough, can get to the abatement warrant. It just takes a lot more of Travis's time and the attorney's office time to get to that, but those are tools available to us depending on the severity of the problem. So we, I mean, if, if it's bad enough, we will pursue those.
If we, if we go, have to go that route, which, you know, I, I know it's only a small percentage, are we able to recover those additional costs, you know, for the attorney's time and everything that gets stacked on top of all the rest of it, right?
Yeah, especially with the changes proposed in this ordinance will make it a lot easier to do that.
Awesome. All right, thank you very much.
Councilman Mandanza, just to clarify that point, one of the things that this ordinance does that was lacking from the, the current ordinance is it specifically ties it back to the compliance order process. So previously, there's really no, it, it's anti-graffiti, but there's, there's lacking enforcement mechanisms. Where here, it actually specifically says you can go through administrative citations, et cetera, but if you have somebody who doesn't comply, you can then follow the compliance order process, and that was sort of a link that was missing. And again, that's where we can levy much more significant penalties, we can collect, recover some of our costs, those sorts of things. So that really gives us more leverage when we're trying to enforce against some of those property owners who are unwilling or uninterested in abating some of the issues on their property.
Wonderful, thank you.
Couple of quick questions, great questions by my colleagues. Some of the graffiti is, is, has a certain signature to it, right? And is affiliated with certain members of society, correct? So, you know, my idea with, with Councilwoman Rakuchi is if her signature is out there, I'm going to go, I, I want to get rid of her signature. I'll go clean it up as the other signature. But the real serious question is, do you have the ability to lean property of those who are putting that graffiti on our public places? And you can, through their signature, know, know their location? And I, this is a law enforcement question, but can you go pursue them and then lean, lean some of their valuable toys?
If the totality of the circumstances, or we have sufficient probable cause to know who it was specifically that committed something, we could pursue that as criminal prosecution, and yes, we could potentially lean that person if we know specifically who it was that committed the graffiti. And one of the other things that we do with respect to signatures, and I think this is an important point, is we document those instances that may have certain affiliations, and we report that to the crime suppression units so that they are also aware of where the graffiti is. So it's a multifaceted effort to try to abate these issues, because there are ways to identify some of these individuals who are committing the graffiti through those means.
Great. You, you understood exactly where I was going. All right, well, we're going to open it up for public comment, and we're going to close public comment and inquire if there are any additional questions.
Mayor, what's the best way to report graffiti? We ought to mention that since we're talking about it.
I think there's a number. I think there's a phone number, is it?
Yes, you can go to the OPIS portal to submit an online complaint for graffiti, or you can contact the code enforcement complaint line. But it is recommended that you submit it online. It automatically uploads to our Excel database where we have access to immediately assign and further investigate.
Thank you.
Excellent question, Councilman Albert. Unless there's other questions or comments, I'll ask the city clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item ten point two, the city council consider introducing for you first reading an ordinance of the council of the city of Roseville amending chapter ten point five three of Title X of the Roseville Municipal Code regarding graffiti. At this time, may I please have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our real call with Vice Mayor Bernascony. Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandanza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi. And Mayor Haldishell.
Yes, excellent report, and I love visuals, so pictures worth a thousand words, as they say. All right, next we will have item ten point three, the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, third quarter report with Assistant Finance Director Scott Pettingill and Assistant City Manager, Chief Financial Officer Dennis Goffman.
Again, Mayor.
Your report, we'll move along. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. With me is Scott Pettingill, our Assistant Finance Director. And Scott will provide an update tonight on the city's budget status based on the third quarter budget report that is included in your packet. And then I'll wrap up our presentation with a projection of our general fund year-end budget surplus, as well as updates on CalPERS and their recent investment results, and the city's American Rescue Plan Act spending plan. And then I'll conclude with a schedule of our future budget presentations. So I'll hand it off to Scott to briefly cover the third quarter report.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. I'll begin with an overview of our general fund revenues as of the third quarter, which ended on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. This chart in front of you shows the percentage of revenue received on the left-hand side and the revenue budget on the right-hand side. Overall, general fund revenues as of the third quarter were at sixty-one percent of budget, or approximately one hundred and nineteen million, in revenues received compared to our estimated revenue budget of one hundred and ninety-seven million. The primary factor contributing to our revenues being at sixty-one percent versus seventy-five percent of the year lapsed is because of the timing associated with receiving our sales and property tax revenues. Sales tax revenues presented in this slide reflect revenues received from taxable sales through January twenty twenty-three. Sales tax revenues collected from February through June will be reflected on the city's fourth quarter financial report. Similarly, property tax revenues were at fifty-seven percent because of the city receives the second installment of property tax revenues in the fourth quarter of the year. TOT revenue exceeded estimates at seventy-five percent of budget, or approximately four million. I did want to pause here for a second to mention that Dennis will be going into more details on the year-end results for each of these revenues a little bit later in the presentation. To continue, Parks Recreation Library revenues were at seventy-three percent of budget. Due to stronger-than-anticipated development activity, building permit, plan check, and engineering inspection fee revenues exceeded estimates, with plan check exceeding year-end estimates by seven percent, and engineering inspection fees exceeding year-end budget estimates by three percent. Lastly, the other revenue category was at eighty percent of budget, primarily due to mutual aid reimbursements associated with wildfire assistance provided to other agencies. Moving on to general fund expenditures. Overall, general fund expenditures track below budget at seventy-one percent. The slightly lower spending rate of seventy-one percent versus seventy-five percent of the year lapsed is primarily due to cost savings from vacancies and material service and supply savings. The slightly higher rate of spending in economic development is related to the timing associated with processing general fund reimbursements for the housing division, from the Housing Authority Fund, Housing Choice Voucher Funds, and CDBG Funds. Staff has since processed the necessary reimbursements, and the department will end the year under budget. On this next slide, we provide an update on each of the city's enterprise funds. Electric fund revenues was on a budget as of the third quarter and will near above estimates due to stronger-than-anticipated usage. Water fund revenues trended below target as of the third quarter due to lower-than-anticipated uses during the winter months. Wastewater and waste services revenues will end the year at or above estimates due to increased residential consumption as well as new development. Similar to prior years, the transit and transportation fund variances are due to the timing associated with their major revenue streams. Most of the revenues will be realized by the end of the fiscal year. Revenues in the youth development fund were at seventy-one percent of budget. The six point eight million in revenues includes a one point eight million in the ARPA fund subsidy. Enrollment trends are improving, but staff are, are taking measures to reduce operating costs to help offset a year-end revenue shortfall in this fund. On this next slide is an overview of enterprise fund operating expenditures. Expenditures in electric fund were at seventy-one percent of budget. The lower-than-anticipated level of spending is due to the timing associated with some expenditures, as well as lower power supply costs due to a substantial increase in hydroelectric energy. Spending in the EU funds were lower than, lower than budget, ranging from sixty-one percent to seventy percent due to vacant positions and service and supply savings. In addition, expenditures in the water operations fund were lower than budget due to reduced water costs from lower-than-anticipated water usage during the winter months. Transit and transportation funds were low than anticipated due to vacancies and delays in receiving some vehicle purchases, and the youth development fund was at fifty-seven percent of budget due to the measures taken to reduce operational costs and mitigate impacts of decreased enrollment, as I mentioned previously. And lastly, this slide provides an update of revenues in the fire facilities, public facilities, and our strategic improvement funds. Due to continued strong development activity, the public facilities revenues estimates exceeded estimates by nine percent of the, as of the third quarter, and revenues in the fire facilities fund and the strategic improvement fund ended the third quarter close to on target at seventy-two percent and seventy-one percent. The sustained increase in development activity during this year has resulted in all three of these funds exceeding estimates as of the end of the year, with fire facilities anticipated to end the year at two point one million, public facilities is expected to end the year at seven million, and the strategic improvement fund is expected to end the year at two point eight million in revenues. Now that concludes my portion of the presentation, and I'll hand it back to Dennis.
Thanks, Scott. So my portion of the presentation will be a fiscal update for the general fund, bringing the information forward through the end of the fiscal year on a preliminary basis, unaudited, as well as an update on CalPERS, the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, and then our upcoming budget schedule. So first, I wanted to mention our sales tax results, which, as you know, is the general fund's largest revenue source. The Bradley Burns one percent sales tax is on the left-hand side of this slide, and end of the year, four percent or three point three million dollars below our budget estimate at seventy point eight million dollars compared to the budget of seventy-four point one million dollars. On the other hand, on the right-hand side, you see the Measure B revenue came in seven hundred thousand or two percent above the budget estimates. And you might ask yourselves, why is one above budget and the other one below budget? And that's partly because the, the basis for those taxes are different. The Measure B is a local half-cent sales tax. That Bradley Burns is the statewide tax, and the, the basis for those taxes are slightly different. And the Bradley Burns tax reflects really the slowing that we're seeing in sales tax growth throughout the state. And we've been seeing slowing growth over the last few quarters. The slowing growth, we understand, is attributable to people coming out of the pandemic, spending more money on travel and things that are not taxable sales, as well as uncertainty in the economy around inflation, higher interest rates, and the potential for an economic slowdown. This next graph that we provide on a regular basis shows a multi-year trend, look at the city's four major sales tax generators, the auto mall, the Galleria, the Creekside Town Center, and the Fountains. The data in this graph is through the first quarter of twenty twenty-three, so through March. You can see the recovery from the pandemic on the left-hand side, particularly for the auto mall and the Galleria in twenty twenty. And then you can see the seasonal trends that happen with the increase in the fourth quarter at the Galleria, which is the purple line there in the middle. And you can see the, the seasonal line at the top for the Roseville Auto Mall, because they tend to have more car buyers in the spring quarters. This next graph shows the annualized percent change in sales tax cash receipts. For Roseville in the blue line, Plaster County looks orange, and the statewide is the gray line. And you see on the left-hand side the negative sales tax growth that was experienced during the pandemic during twenty twenty. And then you see, beginning of twenty twenty-one, the sales tax began to grow and then grow rapidly, and peaking at about a twenty-four percent growth rate at the end of twenty twenty-one. But then you see throughout twenty twenty- you see throughout 2022, a declining growth rate on the right-hand side of the slide. And as of the first quarter of 2023, the sales tax growth has actually dipped below that red line that we labeled historical average. And that's what's contributed to our lower-than-anticipated Bradley Burn sales tax revenue results for last fiscal year. It's important to note that, you know, Roseville's not the only area that's experiencing this slowing sales tax growth. It's a very similar line for the county and for California as a whole, based on what happened with the pandemic, coming out of the pandemic and returning to somewhat more normal, but actually, right now, a rate that's below the historical average. The next slide shows the year-end results for property tax revenue, which is the next largest general fund revenue source. The graph on the left side of the slide shows the property tax ended 2.9 million above the budget estimate, or about 4% above the budget estimate. And then on the right-hand side, you see the graph for the hotel tax or transient occupancy tax, which ended the year about $1.5 million, or 38% above the budget estimate. And that's a result of the ballot measure that was passed that had our tax rate increase effective January of 2023. So based on these updated data through the end of the year, although they are preliminary unaudited data, and the budget monitoring meetings that we conduct with all of the city departments, we've developed this year-end budget surplus projection for the general fund. You see those numbers in the blue box at the top that I covered on the different tax revenues. And then we are estimating between $4 and $5 million of revenue in excess of budget for the departments, in departments like Development Services. And then, working with the departments, we've estimated department expenditure savings between $9 and $11 million for the end of last fiscal year, coming to a total of between $15 and $18 million of a projected positive year-end surplus. We'll present more information as we finalize the numbers and have the city's audit take place this fall. And then we'll be back in January with a year-end budget report and a finalized budget surplus for the general fund. So when staff present that year-end report in January, the final surplus amount will be presented along with recommendations for use of those one-time resources. Some examples of one-time resources that could be used for things like one-time capital expenditures, including funding for the city's CIP rehab program, which includes things like facilities, equipment, technology, streets, and parks. The city's also facing some funding gaps in some capital improvement projects that need one-time resources, as well as some fleet vehicles that are coming due for replacement that are underfunded because the cost of everything has gone up so much over the last couple of years. And then staff may also recommend addressing the city's pension liability with a portion of these one-time resources, with potentially a contribution to the Pension Trust Fund, or with an additional discretionary payment to CalPERS. On this next slide, I wanted to mention, because CalPERS recently announced their preliminary investment return for last fiscal year. And you see that on the right-hand column, that 5.8% was their preliminary return. That number will be finalized in November after they have all of their information together. And you see that 5.8% is 1% below their target return of 6.8%. You'll notice it didn't change the statewide funded status very much. It stayed at 72%. But that 1% difference in that investment return will cause the city's liability and contributions to go up to some extent. Not as much as the negative return did the year before, but it will cause our liability and contributions to go up. And so staff are analyzing the new actuarial valuations that we just received from CalPERS, and we're working with their forecasting tools to provide some updated scenarios. And we'll provide those to the council in a more thorough CalPERS update in the next budget development cycle. We also wanted to share a final update on the city's ARPA, or American Rescue Plan spending plan. The city received a total allocation of $17.6 million. And as you'll recall, the city's lost revenue from the pandemic provided the city with maximum flexibility for how these resources are spent on one-time expenditures. Council approved funding augmentations for projects like Weber Park, the Johnson Pool renovations, the soccer complex, as well as the other programs that are listed here on this slide. And so we thought it was important to kind of bring back a complete list that demonstrated the final spending plan for the city's ARPA allocation. Finally, I wanted to share the current schedule that we have for future budget presentations, starting with the year-end budget report. And the results for the last fiscal year, we'll bring that forward in January. After the books are closed, after the city's audit of the financial statements, staff will bring back those final results. Around that same time, staff will bring forward the first budget update for the current fiscal year that started on July 1st. Then in May, staff plans to bring forward a second budget update for the current fiscal year, around the same time that we'll be proposing the budget for the next fiscal year, fiscal year 2024-2025. And then around this same time next year, we'll bring forward a third budget update for the current fiscal year. So this concludes our presentation. We're available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions, council?
You know, the only comment I have, it's really nice that we have been doing it for years, but it never stops. It's cyclic. It's all year long, and when one's done, we're back again, doing it again. I don't know if I like it, but I do. It's really good. It keeps us all aware of our finances.
Dennis, I have one question about the CalPERS return. Is any of that a result of the delayed income tax filing? Do you think any of that's baked into that, or?
No. No.
When do they have? Was that only personal, not corporate income tax?
Are you referring to during the pandemic when things were delayed?
No, this year because of flooding and other natural disasters, some of the counties were delayed. And I think Plaster was one of them, where you didn't have to file your income tax until October.
No, no, that wouldn't have an effect on this. This is just the performance of the stocks and bonds and other investments in their investment portfolio.
Okay, great. I'll open for public comment. I'll close public comment. Any other questions or comments of the council? This is presentation only, no action required. And thank you. It is a little bit like balancing your checkbook. And nobody balances their checkbook anymore, do they? Balancing your Excel spreadsheet.
This guy, he does.
I'd like to know where I'm at.
It's sort of like updating your Excel spreadsheet.
I hope you do.
It's kind of good, yeah. You got to do that.
Dennis is balancing the checkbook.
Anyway, we'll move on into the public hearing parts of our agenda this evening. And we'll...
You can, she'll sign that for you if you need to. Oh, turn around. There you have a bunch of people back there.
You've got a whole group back there that's ready for you. All right. Ms. 11.1, Community Facilities District Number Four, Public Services, Annexation Number Nine, 1028 Main Street subdivision. I will open the public hearing. Dennis, take us home.
Thank you again, Mayor and council members. The purpose of this item is approving an annexation of territory into the city's CFD Number Four, which is our infill CFD for maintenance services. And this annexation is for 1028 Main Street. This is a subdivision of 10 single-family residences. The tentative map subdivision was approved by the Planning Commission back in March of this year. And according to the conditions of approval, the property has to annex into this infill CFD to help pay for maintenance. Back in August, council approved the resolution of intent to annex this territory into the CFD, and this is the second step in that process. This next slide shows a map of the proximity of where the project site is. It's on Main Street with the, at Porter Drive, which is across from Casberg Park and Casberg School. And like I said, it's 10 residential homes. And so the recommendation tonight is for council approval of two resolutions. One, to annex the territory into the district, authorizing the levy of the tax and submitting the levy to the qualified electors. And then the second resolution is declaring the results of the election and directing us to record the notice of the special tax lien. Thank you very much, and I'm available to answer any questions.
All right, council, any questions?
I want to know if the 12-by-12 post that's on that corner, that's like Campaign Central for Signs, is that coming down now? I'm sorry.
All right, any other questions? All right, and I'll open it for public comment. Close public comment. Close the public hearing. I will say, I've been past this site. I looked it up, and I was like, as I've been going to your house, I was like, I wonder what's going to ever happen to that piece of ground. And now I know. All right. So I'll ask the city clerk to announce the ballot results.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The total number of votes on ballots was three. We had three yes votes and zero no votes. Hence, this does pass unanimously.
All right, any other questions or comments from the council regarding the presentation? I'll request the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 11.1, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-376 of the City Council of the City of Roseville of annexation of territory to Community Facilities District, authorizing the levy of a special tax and submitting the levy of tax to qualified electors in the City of Roseville, Community Facilities District Number Four, or Public Services, Annexation Number Nine, at 1028 Main Street subdivision, and adopting Resolution Number 23-377 of the City Council of the City of Roseville, declaring results of a special annexation election, determining validity of prior proceedings, and directing recording of amended notice of a special tax lien in City of Roseville, Communities Facility District Number Four, otherwise recognizes Public Services Annexation Number Nine, at 1028 Main Street subdivision. With that, Mr. Mayor, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldashell.
Yes. 11.2 Downtown Code and Ordinance Updates 2023. We'll open the public hearing.
Good evening again, Mike Isom, Greg Better, Lauren Hawker, all of Development Services. Lauren will give the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. My name is Lauren Hawker, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about the Downtown Code and Ordinance Updates Project. So most of these updates are to bring the downtown code into compliance with legislative updates or as part of needed maintenance. And these are relatively straightforward, so I'll go over those now. Your staff report contains the detailed summary of the changes, and of course, you've got Exhibits A, B, and C that are the red lines of all the changes I'm going to go over. But I'll go over a summary in these slides. So the Downtown Code, Chapter Two, is where the permitted use table is, and we're proposing the following changes, all of which we also made or city council also adopted into the zoning ordinance within the last few years. So the first change is just to indicate that community care and long-term care are allowed where residential uses are allowed, consistent with state law. Next is to indicate that low-barrier navigation centers are allowed where multifamily uses are allowed in mixed-use zones, also consistent with state law. Also, to add electric vehicle charging stations as a use and move away from the term "gas station" into "fuel station" to recognize alternative fuels. And finally, we're proposing to add a table note indicating that transitional and supportive housing are residential uses, again, consistent with state law. In Downtown Codes, Chapter Three and Four, so Downtown Code, Chapter Three, contains parking standards, and we're just adding a note that those standards can be reduced, may be reduced by one or more state laws or sections of the government code. And that includes density bonus laws and laws about proximity to transit. And adding the note is the most straightforward way to make that change, because there are multiple laws that affect it. And rather than doing a series of red lines that we may need to revisit again in future, as there are future laws, the note sort of clarifies that issue and allows us to move forward. And then in Chapter Four, we're proposing to amend the Vernon Street District Standards for ground-floor spaces. That's downtown District Six. Currently, the standard requires that 80% of the ground-floor space be retail and 20% be office. That has been an impediment to development and redevelopment, as we all know that the non-residential market has changed a lot since this was first established. And the point of this was to keep that ground-floor space activated. So we worked with economic development on revising or proposing to revise that section. And what we're proposing is it just requires that 80% of the space be any one of the permitted non-residential uses in that district. So that keeps those ground-floor spaces activated, but gives a lot more flexibility to tenants and developers. Then Downtown Code, Chapter Seven, is Section 7.11, is the murals section. And that was originally designed to focus mural development around imagery related to historic Roseville. And that's been difficult to implement, or has hampered beneficial mural projects in the past. So Blue Lion Arts administers a mural program for the downtown, and so we worked collaboratively with them on revisions to this section. So the revisions include deleting the location section, because it required murals to be visible from the street and sidewalk, even though murals, say, in alleyways can be beneficial. Proposing to delete the design requirement section, because it requires murals to be of historical significance, even though non-historical murals support the intent and purpose of the mural section, which is to create a vibrant and engaging downtown environment. Augmenting the advertising section to avoid having to refer to both the sign ordinance and the downtown code in order to understand the existing prohibition on commercial advertising, and deleting the relation to adjacent property section, because the issues there are already addressed by the design review process itself. That brings us to the two very simple changes to the sign ordinance and zoning ordinance. To the sign ordinance, we're proposing to allow three wall signs instead of two, one on each wall face, for corner tenants of freestanding pad buildings, like the red building shown in the image here. And in the zoning ordinance, we're proposing just to establish that text amendments to the zoning ordinance shall be initiated by city council, planning commission, or the planning manager. In other words, by the city. So in terms of outreach, as I indicated, we did coordinate with economic development on some of these changes, as well as Blue Lion Arts. We posted a notice on the Roseville Coalition of Neighborhood Association websites for both the planning commission and this city council hearing. And of course, we published notices in the newspaper. So when we brought this item to planning commission, planning commission unanimously recommended approval to city council of the, to adopt the two findings of fact and approve the downtown code amendments, and also adopt the two findings of fact and approve the zoning ordinance amendment. Now, for the sign ordinance, the planning commission doesn't have review authority, so we asked that they review and comment on the sign ordinance. Planning commission had no comments, so Planning Division is recommending that city council approve the sign ordinance amendment. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions you may have at this time.
Council questions?
Thank you.
And Albert?
First, I want to apologize, because I did not read this until after my meeting with our city manager. So when we set up the ordinance originally, I was part of the downtown Roseville merchants. And I know some uses that this would allow, and I'm very supportive of that. But at the time, one of the things we were trying to stop in the downtown, because the whole purpose was to try to bring people downtown. So one use was a carpet retailer that wanted to buy a bunch of property to store their carpets in. It was closed. They weren't even, it wasn't open to retail sales. And so that was one of the reasons we wanted to put that in. Another one was a church use. Churches are great. We've got one downtown that's fine. It's already grandfathered in, but churches typically are only open one day a week, maybe two days a week. And so it's kind of a dead space. And so those were things we were trying to stop. And then another one was, there was a very large charter school that was going to have traffic that just inundated downtown. Right now, it inundates another area of town. And so that was, those were some of the uses. And now I'm a little concerned just saying "non-residential," because it seems like it opens this up. So is there more refined language, please?
There's still, there's still a land use, there's still a land use table that regulates the allowed uses. So it is, it's 80%. Ground floor can be one of the allowed uses. So for instance, schools, private elementary or secondary schools are not an allowed use in that district. There is a footnote for community assembly that on Vernon Street, community assembly is not an allowed use on the ground floor. So you could have a church if it's on the second floor, or if it's not on the Vernon Street-facing portion of the district, because there is a portion of downtown District Six, some of the side streets, for instance. You could have a ground-floor church on some of the side streets. But on the Vernon-facing street, a church is not allowed on the ground floor. So I think So I think we do have, so some of those uses that you're, that you've mentioned, councilmember, I think we're still protected.
Great, okay, thank you very much.
Great, any other questions or comments? All right, I'll open public comment. Okay, we have public comment.
Hello, my name is Marlo Borland, and I am here on behalf of the Roseville Area Chamber of Commerce. I am here in support of this update, specifically the sign ordinance. While this may seem like a minor change, allowing three signs for the NCAP businesses will allow for more visibility for local businesses. Thank you for your time and your support of local businesses in Roseville.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Close of public comment, or close of public hearing. See if the council has any additional questions or comments. I'll ask the city clerk to read the motion.
On item 11.2, the city council will consider adopting the two findings of fact and introducing for a first reading the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Roseville, amending Section 2.3.2 of Chapter Two of the Roseville Downtown Code Regarding Allowed Land Uses, Section 3.4 of Chapter Three, Regarding Parking Requirements, Section 4.6.2 of Chapter Four, Regarding Vernon Street District Development Standards, and Section 7.11 of Chapter Seven Regarding Downtown Murals. And introducing for a first reading the ordinance of the Council of the City of Roseville, amending Section 17.06.220 of Chapter 17.06 of Title 17 of the Roseville Municipal Code Regarding Wall Signs for Building Complexes. And introducing for a first reading the ordinance of the Council of the City of Roseville, amending Section 19.86.020 of Chapter 19.86 of Title 19 of the Roseville Municipal Code Regarding Zoning Ordinance Amendments. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve? Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Berniscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Maldonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshelt.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Item 11.3 Sierra Vista Specific Plan Parcel WB-52 Park Abandonment, open the public hearing. And ask Greg Bitter and Development Services Isom.
Thank you, Mayor Haldeshelt, members of the city council. Again, Greg Bitter, Planning Manager with the Development Services Department. So the item before the council tonight is to consider a resolution to abandon the irrevocable offer of dedication, which is commonly referred to as an IOD, and that's how I'll be referring to it, for the Sierra Vista Specific Plan Parcel WB-52 as a city park. If you recall, on August 16th of 2023, the city council adopted Resolution Number 23-334, which was a resolution of intent to abandon this IOD for Parcel WB-52. The park abandonment is associated with the land use entitlements that the council will be considering with the next agenda item, so I want to make sure you understand that this is part and parcel of the next, your next agenda item. So if we can go to the next slide. Parcel WB-52 is located just to the north of Pleasant Grove Boulevard. Looks like I messed up the map there, just to the east of Santucci Boulevard. And wow, pardon me.
3D, and we didn't need to put our 3D glasses on, that's what.
I'm backing up by that. So the site is bordered by Sierra Vista Specific Plan Parcels WB-30 and WB-31 to the east, south, and west, and by Sierra Vista Specific Plan Parcel WB-80 to the north. So parcels WB-30 and 31 are both high-density parcels, and they're slated for future multifamily development. Parcel WB-80 is designated as open space and will remain open space. There's also a bike path that will border these properties. So currently, Parcel WB-52 is privately owned. However, the IOD has been recorded on the parcel, allowing the city to accept this dedication and develop the property as a city park. The city's parks and recreation and library staff have evaluated this site and determined that utilizing this property as a city park would provide minimal benefit to the greater community in the Westbrook area. The site is challenged due to its small size, its limited access, and the location in the middle of two multifamily developments. Ultimately, the staff believes that this park would primarily serve the residents of these adjacent multifamily developments and not the greater Westbrook community. With the park abandonment, the city would be receiving or will be receiving the fair-market value of Parcel WB-52 as a park in lieu of land fee, and the Parks and Recreation and Library staff have determined that utilizing these funds for the improvement of other parks within the Westbrook portion of Sierra Vista would benefit a greater number of residents than development of WB-52 as a 1.5-acre park. So while this abandonment of WB-52 for use of, as a park, does decrease the total acreage, neighborhood park acreage in Sierra Vista Specific Plan, the proposal remains consistent with the city's general plan, goals, and policies related to parks and recreation. General Plan Policy PR 1.4 states that the city will consider payment of in lieu fees for both development and parkland as an alternative to dedication of land in order to achieve the parkland standards. So we go to the next slide. In order to abandon the IOD for Parcel WB-52 as a city park, the council must comply with the Municipal Park Abandonment Law of 1939. Specifically, the six steps shown on the slide above must be followed. So to explain how we followed these six steps, as I mentioned earlier, the council first adopted Resolution 23-334 on August 16th, making the appropriate findings to initiate the park abandonment proceedings, and set September 20th, 2023, as the date to take final action. This resolution was posted in the Roseville Press Tribune on August 31st, September 7th, and September 14th of 2023, and was posted on the site in four prominent locations. So tonight, the city council will be considering any objections to the abandonment of the IOD for Parcel WB-52 as a city park, and determining whether or not to order this IOD to be abandoned. So staff has not received any specific objections to the abandonment of this IOD, and I'd also like to point out, as Kenny Shallow will be pointing out in the next presentation, we haven't received any objections to the land use entitlements that are associated with this park abandonment. So we can go to the next slide. So I'd like to conclude. With tonight's hearing, all of the provisions of the Municipal Park Abandonment Act of 1939 have been satisfied. The abandonment of the IOD for Parcel WB-52 as a city park will provide critical funding for the development of nearby parks in the Sierra Vista Specific Plan area, and the abandonment of the IOD for Parcel WB-52 as a city park serves the public interest, health, safety, and welfare of the city of Roseville. So staff's recommendation tonight is to hear public testimony regarding the abandonment of the IOD for a city park and adopt Resolution 23-383, overruling any objections and ordering the IOD for Sierra Vista Specific Plan Parcel WB-52 to be abandoned as a city park. And that concludes my presentation, and we're here for any questions.
Great, council, have any questions?
Greg, how close is the nearest park? I know, I know nothing's been built yet, but you know, will they be a mile away or two miles?
There would be a park on, I believe it's Solair. It's, if we could go back to the slide, the, I'm not sure my slide is the best.
Just kind of if there's, if there's some parks in the area that are planned.
It would be, it would, well, you have the open space that connects over, there'll be a bike trail heading, again, my slide is too narrow-focused, but there will be a bike trail along the northern border of those WB-30, 52, 31, leading back to the east that will take you back to, it'll actually take you back to Westbrook Boulevard and Sports Complex. It'll take you into the.
Rakucci Park's that green piece showing there.
Oh, WB-51, yes.
Yeah, I was, I had the impression that there were a couple close by, and I just wanted to double.
And then immediately, just south and off the slide, there is another park next to an elementary school.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Cruz, if I could just add, one of the things we looked at is, would it meet the park standards, the neighborhood park standards with this abandonment, and it would. It will meet that acreage, and there is a park currently in walking distance with several parks being planned with the absorption hitting 60% over the next couple of years.
Thank you.
Yep, Councilman Albert?
There, to the west of that location, there would be sharing that park property is a proposed senior affordable complex, and I just wanted to know, do we have any commitment by the developer to actually build the park for private use for those residents, since the others might be a little far to walk?
I can tell you that the plans that we've looked at for that, for that particular site has recreational amenities. I mean, this, the developer of W, the, it's the same property owner for WB-30, 31, and W-16, so there's three high-density sites immediately adjacent to each other along Pleasant Grove, and they have recreational amenities already plugged in for W-16. I know that they're still working on the plans for the middle parcel, WB-31, and the idea is to have, have more acreage to have recreational amenities. It's the same developer for the Campus Oaks Apartments. They have a really, a pretty nice swimming pool area, clubhouse, so we believe that they're going to just have enhanced. They also, in Campus Oaks, they have a fairly large open, open space area to the south with walking path, dog park area. So we know that they've, have a history of doing enhanced recreational amenities for their multifamily developments. Now, whether it's on that particular geographic area or not, that, this gives them the flexibility to have more acreage for, for amenities.
I'd be curious if the developer's in the room, if they might want to address that when it comes time.
I am sure the developer's in the room.
That would be important, I think, for those residents.
Anything else before we open up the public comment? Open up the public comment.
I'm Scott Cannell, the developer of Campus Oaks and W-16, and hopefully many, many, many more projects in Roseville. And the simple answer to that question is, it's absolutely my intention to build a private park of at least one and a half acres. I'm just going to move it a little bit to the east so that it's easier for everybody to get to, so the people on W-16 can get to it, the people on WB-30 that were, is going to be in front of you in a few minutes can get to it, and of course, the people right there on WB-32, which we probably don't intend to build till maybe '26 or '27, you know, it's going to be right there in their community. But yes, we're going to build at least an acre and a half park, and it is our intention to work with staff to build that park soon. You know, we're not going to wait till we develop WB-31. We're going to try to build the park probably end of next year or beginning of the following year.
Thank you very much.
Very much. Now we know what the red square represented. That was east, right? All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other public comments? I'll close public comment, close the public hearing, and inquire if the council has any additional questions or comments. Ask the clerk to read the motion.
Mr. Mayor, on item 11.3, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-383, overruling any objections and ordering Sierra Vista Specific Plan Parcel WB-52 to be abandoned as a city park. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Berniscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Maldonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshelt.
Yes, item 11.4, North Industrial Planning Area, Perren, Yulipacker, Campus Oaks, and Perren. Parcel CO-52 and Sierra Vista Specific Plan Parcels WB-30, WB-32, WB-52, and FD-34. General Plan Amendment, Specific Plan Amendment, Rezone, Development Agreement Amendment, Master Plan Amendment, and Major Project Permit Stage One Modification. I'll open up the public hearing.
Councilmembers, this involves land use change of various parcels within Campus Oaks and Sierra Vista. Kenny is going to give the presentation this evening. Kenny Shallow.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Kenny Shallow, and here to present the project for you tonight, which will add 285 market rate HDR units in the HP Campus Oaks master plan and 266 affordable HDR units in the Sierra Vista Specific Plan. The project site consists of five vacant parcels in two areas of the city. One parcel is located on Parcel CO-52 of the HP Campus Oaks master plan and is about 17 and a half acres. It has a zoning designation of industrial business park with a special area overlay and a land use designation of tech park, business professional, and light industrial. The four other project parcels are located in the western portion of the Sierra Vista Specific Plan and consist of Parcels WB-30, WB-32, WB-52, and FD-34. With the exception of WB-52, these parcels are zoned multifamily residential and have a land use designation of HDR. Parcel WB-52 has a zoning and land use designation of parks and recreation, and this one and a half acre parcel was intended to be dedicated to the city as a park, but tonight, the city council adopted a resolution to order the IOD be abandoned. No development is being proposed with this project, but it will facilitate future development of the parcels, and the project requires the entitlements listed on this slide. The project would rezone Parcel CO-52 to R3 and change the land use to HDR. The proposed changes require a master plan amendment for MPP Stage One modification to amend the HP Co. master plan, consistent with the project changes. Parcel CO-52 will have a unit allocation of 285 units, resulting in a density of 16.1 units per acre, consistent with the HDR land use. And also, consistent with the general plan, the site is in close proximity to services, such as the Campus Oaks Town Center to the northwest, which includes a mix of retail, restaurants, and commercial uses. The increase in units would contribute additional funding for public services and for fire and police services through the community facilities districts, which would provide a public benefit. This table summarizes the proposed unit allocations and affordable housing obligations. Sierra Vista Parcels WB-30, WB-32, and FD-34 are already designated as 100% affordable, but the project will add units on these parcels pursuant to state density bonus law, and it'll also change the ratios of very low and low-income units. Also, WB-30 will be age-restricted for senior citizens. The 285 units proposed on CO-52 trigger an affordable obligation to designate 143 of those units as low-income units, but this obligation will be transferred to WB-30 and 32. The net changes will result in an increase of 551 units with an additional 266 affordable units beyond existing conditions. This helps the city in fulfilling its share of the regional housing needs allocation and increasing housing supply. A general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, and rezone are requested to change the land use and zoning of Parcel WB-52 from parks and recreation to HDR and R3. As mentioned, no housing units will be allocated because the owner will develop it with private onsite amenities for the benefit of adjacent residents. Consistent with the general plan, the applicant will pay in lieu fees in the amount of the fair-market value of the property, and the Parks Department has indicated these funds will go towards the improvement of other parks in the area. The project requires amendments to three development agreements, including the Westbrook DA, West Park Federico DA, and the HP Master Plan DA. Each DA will be amended to reflect land use changes, revise affordable housing obligations, and reflect density bonuses. The Westbrook DA will also include a neighborhood park in lieu fee for the redesignation of the park to HDR. The in lieu fee will be required upon issuance of each residential building permit within Parcel WB-31 only, which is a market rate parcel, to not burden the affordable parcels. In terms of public outreach, early notification of the project was posted on the Arcona website, and signs were posted on the project site. Notices of both Planning Commission and City Council meetings were published in the Roseville Press Tribune, distributed to a 300-foot radius, and posted on Arcona, and no public comments have been received. An addendum to the HP Campus Oaks Master Plan EIR was prepared for changes to Parcel CO-52. An addendum to the Sierra Vista Specific Plan EIR was prepared for changes to the rest of the project parcels. The addenda were combined into one secret document, which includes a cumulative considerations analysis, which looks at the combined effects of the project. The project would result in an increase in trip generation, but this would be offset from the decrease in vehicle miles traveled, largely due to the age-restricted uses on Parcel WB-30, which have a lower average trip rate and trip length compared to a typical multifamily use. In terms of utilities, the land use change for CO-52 will result in a decrease in electric demand and an increase in water and sewer demands, but the increases do not result in a significant impact to the city's facilities. Overall, the project will not result in any new environmental impacts. In conclusion, staff finds the project is consistent with the zoning ordinance, Sierra Vista Specific Plan, HP Co. master plan, and general plan, and the required findings for approval can be made. At this time, the Planning Commission recommends the city council take the actions listed on this slide, approving the project entitlements. And that concludes my presentation.
Could you read all this?
I'm going to let you do that.
All right, council, do you have any questions?
Nope.
And I'll open it for a public comment.
Well, I'm Scott Cannell, and it's very good to be in front of city council again tonight. We are very happy that as we expand and diversify our family portfolio here in Roseville, that we're also able to significantly help Roseville in meeting its arena numbers. And we're going to do that with the project that we, projects that we present tonight, and hopefully with many other projects that we will bring to you over the coming couple of years. of years. As some of you know, we develop properties all over California and in many other states as well. A primary reason why we're investing so heavily in Roseville is the exceptional quality of your city staff in the form of experience and professionalism and service. With respect to this application, I would like to specifically recognize and thank Kenny Shallow for the unbelievable job that she did on this extraordinarily complex task. I mean, this was really a Herculean effort, and I can't thank her enough, and I really hope that you guys recognize her. I'd also like to call out Mike Isom, and Greg Bitter, and Derek Ogden, and Mark Stout. These four gentlemen always make themselves available to us, and they are the best, the best, planning and engineering experts that we've ever worked with at any municipality anywhere. So I think it's important for you to hear that, because applicants probably don't say that to you that often. Your city staff is absolutely exceptional. Lastly, if council has any secret questions, we have our secret expert, Casey Shorrock, here. We have our attorney, Marcus Laduka, and my son Jonathan and I are also here to answer your questions. So thank you, and we're just thrilled to be expanding our footprint in Roseville.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing that, I'll close public comments, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask the council for any additional questions or comments. I think we all might have some comments, right? So, Councilman Albert?
I think, I do have to correct you. We actually do hear that a lot about our staff, so it's nice for the consistency, and we definitely appreciate our staff. They do an excellent job of keeping our city moving in the right direction and protecting us from bad ideas and encouraging good ideas, so I think we're all in agreement there. I appreciate what you have done in our city in the past. You've always exceeded affordable numbers, and I think this is very creative, and we know we need the help on the RENA numbers, so I personally appreciate what you do. I enjoy the creativity, and I'm glad you're able to work with our staff to better our city. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Berniscony.
I echo my colleagues' comments. Thank you for everything that you have invested in our city, and always a quality product, too.
Councilwoman Kuchi.
I echo what you say, what you've built. Here in our city, it's been high quality, so we're looking forward to your project.
Member Mendoza.
Great to see you up here again. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Vice Mayor Berniscony said it well. I mean, not only is your investment significant, your creativity, your innovation and creativity and innovation in financing, you know, results in affordable housing that is maintained private sector-wise. Your product is beautiful. Thank you for investing in our city. And you're, you know, in the state of the city, you know, you are one of the folks that, you know, we draw folks nationally, and now with Bosch internationally, and so we've got a lot to be proud of, and thank you for making us, making our city the quality, adding to the quality of life. So I'll ask the city clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 11.4, the city council will consider approving the fifth addendum to the Hewlett-Packard Campus Oaks Master Plan Environmental Impact Report, or EIR, and the 12th amendment to the Sierra Vista specific plan EIR, and adopting Resolution Number 23-388, amending the general plan to change the land use designation on certain real properties in the city of Roseville, and adopting Resolution Number 23-389, amending the Sierra Vista specific plan, and adopting the two findings of fact and introducing for a first reading in ordinance of the council of the city of Roseville, rezoning certain real properties in the city of Roseville, and adopting Resolution Number 23-390, adopting the two findings of fact and approving the modification of a major project permit stage one in order to modify the Hewlett-Packard Campus Oaks master plan, and adopting five findings of fact and introducing for a first reading in ordinance of the council of the city of Roseville, adopting a third amendment to the development agreement by and between the city of Roseville and West Park SV400 LLC relative to the Sierra Vista specific plan, and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the city of Roseville. And adopt, adopting the five findings of fact and introducing for a first reading in ordinance of the council of the city of Roseville, adopting a sixth amendment of the development agreement by and between the city of Roseville and West Park Sierra Vista LLC as a signee of West Park Federico LLC, Morier Investments LLC, and Federico Tyler Family Limited Partnership relative to the Sierra Vista specific plan, and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the city of Roseville. And adopting the five findings of fact and introducing for a first reading in ordinance of the council of the city of Roseville, adopting the 10th amendment of the development agreement by and between the city of Roseville and BBC Roseville Oaks LLC relative to the Campus Oaks property within the Hewlett-Packard Campus Oaks master plan, and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the city of Roseville. And with that, if I can have a motion to approve and a motion to introduce.
Got moved.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Berniscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshelt.
Yes. And I must say, that was pretty impressive, reading all of that, right? I just had to read the title of the, uh...
Thank you very much.
And I think we all, we all echo the applicant's comments about our staff. Thank you for your good work. 11.5, Community Development Block Grant 2022 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. I will open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Haldeshelt and council members. I'm Tricia Isom, Housing Manager in the Economic Development Department, and tonight I have with me Christine, and she will be giving you our annual CAPER report.
Great.
Good evening, Mayor Haldeshelt and council members. I am Christine Fields, Housing Analyst in the Economic Development Department. Tonight, we're holding a public hearing to present the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPER, which is the annual report that highlights the accomplishments for the Community Development Block Grant Program. The 2022 CDBG funds totaled $713,722. Since the city became an entitlement jurisdiction in 1986, CDBG and CDBG CV funds have provided over $18 million to the community. These funds have benefited lower-income households in Roseville through housing rehabilitation, public services, affordable housing, and home and shelter and prevention services for over 35 years. In 2022, the CDBG funds provided grants of approximately $97,000 to seven community-based organizations who assisted over 1,200 households and individuals. The public services programs included case management, mental health services, trauma and abuse recovery support services, hot meal and grocery delivery, as well as support services for the homeless. A new program that was funded through CDBG this program year was the Placer Veterans Stand Down Event, which is a three-day event held each May that provides valuable resources for veterans who are homeless and at risk of homelessness. Lastly, capital improvement, improvements projects awarded in 2022 have been delayed due to factors beyond their control, and therefore contracts have been extended to allow for completion in the upcoming year. In the 2022 program year, approximately $412,000 of CDBG funds was loaned to AMI Housing to acquire a transitional housing facility known as the Monarch House. The Monarch House has been in operation at the same site since 2015 and provides emergency crisis stabilization and housing navigation services for extremely low-income individuals undergoing a mental health crisis. The acquisition of this facility will be an ongoing resource in the city of Roseville serving Placer County residents. Additionally, the owner-occupied housing rehabilitation program assisted five low-income households with housing rehabilitation. This program not only assists, assists lower-income residents, but also improves the housing stock and sustainability of the city's neighborhoods. CDBG CV funds are CDBG grant funds to be used specifically for preventing, preparing for, and responding to the coronavirus. The city received two allocations of CV funding during the COVID-19 pandemic totaling $1.2 million. During the 2022 program year, approximately $16,000 was expended to provide fair housing services to 46 low-income Roseville residents. In addition, a fair housing workshop was offered to tenants and landlords regarding rights and responsibilities under federal and state fair housing law. AMI Housing and Kids First were able to support 157 households with approximately, with approximately $370,000 in funds expended through their rent and utility assistance programs, which prevented homelessness and potential evictions. Lastly, the Placer County Office of Education received a contract extension through October 2022 to provide subsidized after-school care for a total of 60 McKinnevento students. Council has approved expenditure of all CV funds awarded to the city, the remaining of which will be expended this fiscal year. So staff requests that council receive public comment on this item and recommends that a resolution be adopted to approve the city's 2022 CAPER and authorize it for submission to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? All right, I'll open it up for public comment. Close public comment, and I'll close the public hearing and ask the council if they have any additional questions or comments. I will just comment, and I think all of us up here, those are impressive numbers, right? I mean, we saw Dennis and Scott earlier with a lot of budget numbers, but those, not only, those qualitative numbers tell the story of how we are working with those who are most at risk in our community and working to find them housing and provide them services. So thank you for an excellent presentation. And I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 11.5, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-370, approving the 2022 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPER, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to submit the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, 2022 CAPER to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HAD. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a, we have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Berniscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshelt.
Thanks very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And we're getting really close. We might actually make a...
Clothes are coming in.
Clothes are coming. Item 11.6.
You have one job here.
Winding Creek apartment projects, fee deferral. You know, I got 9:30 as, yeah, so...
Evelyn Wood speed reading class comes in handy.
I'm sorry, let me open the public hearing so we get this right, okay? Thank you. Melissa Aguiano and Gina McCall.
Good evening, soon-to-be-good-night mayor and members of the city council. Melissa Aguiano, you're city's economic development director. I'm joined tonight by Gina McCall, who will give a presentation on a fee deferral request for the Winding Creek Apartments.
Good evening. As Melissa mentioned, I'm Gina McCall with the city's economic development department, and I will present on the Winding Creek Apartments' fee deferral request. So this fee deferral request was submitted to the city by Anthem Properties, developers of the Winding Creek Apartments complex. The request would allow payment of certain city-controlled impact fees to be deferred to building permit occupancy. Typically, fees would be collected upfront at building permit issuance. The request was reviewed by the various city departments, and the listed fees on this slide are being requested for deferral. Deferral of these fees was determined to have no impact to the city budget. The total fees to be deferred are just over $3.3 million. The city does charge interest on the deferral and an administrative fee for processing the request, so there will be no financial loss to the city from the fee deferral. Just for background, the Winding Creek Apartments project will be located on Blue Oaks Boulevard in the Creek View specific plan. The project will include a 216-unit multifamily apartment complex with onsite amenities on 8.6 acres. The project has already received planning entitlements and has been submitted for building permits, so tonight's request is just considering the timing for payment of impact fees. The Roseville Municipal Code and Government Code, Section 53083, requires all fee deferrals over $100,000 to be approved via a public hearing. This request is routine in nature, and the city's fee deferral program is an important economic development tool that facilitates new development that may not otherwise be financially feasible without this program. So staff is therefore recommending that the city council adopt a resolution approving a fee deferral for the Winding Creek Apartment Projects for the previously stated impact fees plus interest until final of building permit and building occupancy. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, council? And I'll open the public comment. I was, I was, I had my money on the fact that you were here for that item.
He's got to sit here the whole time. He's got to be here for something. So, thank you. My name's Kevin Shealy. I'm with Anthem Properties, and we have developed Winding Creek out in Roseville. We've got a home building project out in West Roseville as well, and this will be our first high-density residential project in the city. And it's programs such as these that allow us to be, you know, to make these projects feasible. So we want to thank you all for your development-friendly approach, and you can add us to your list of international builders. I don't know if you're aware, but Anthem Properties' ownership is out of Vancouver, Canada. So programs such as these that attract developers such as ourselves to your city. So, thank you.
Very good. Any other public comment? Close public comment, close the public hearing. Inquire if the council has any additional questions or comments. All right, city clerk, read the motion. Take us home.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. On item 11.6, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-31, approving fee deferrals for the 3338 Blue Oaks Boulevard Winding Creek Apartments project. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Berniscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshelt.
All right. I will ask the city manager if he has anything else this evening.
No further reports, mayor. Thank you.
And city attorney, anything else this evening?
No, thank you very much.
All right. All right, I'll invite the council members to talk about what they've been doing and who they've been seeing. Councilwoman Kuchi.
Did you want us to say something tonight, or did you want us not to say?
You know what? Yeah, yeah, why don't you, why don't you start us off with maybe, yeah. Thank you.
Just an announcement, kind of a sad announcement. This is one of our former mayors and council members, Mel Hamel, passed away recently. He's been a longtime community activist. He did a lot in, he's a lifelong learner in high education. He had his degrees in many different programs. I knew him as, for 25 years, as a principal here in Roseville, and he actually was the principal when one of my, my granddaughters was at Spanger School, so I used to see him there. And also, when he was on the Roseville City Council, that was one of my first terms on council, was with Mel Hamel. So it was nice to work with them. He always cared about the community, his love for people, especially children, and being in this, and with schools all his life. And he, they're having a celebration of life on Saturday, this coming Saturday, September 30th, at St. Clair's Church at 11:30. But Mel, will we miss? He's a very, very, really unique, special person.
Vice Mayor Berniscony, I mean, I think you were probably of the council, you and Councilmember Kuchi knew him best, so...
Yes, definitely growing up. I, great comments about Mel. The last thing I'll just add about him is that even in his retirement, he was active and always advocating for our schools, our community. I remember there was a school bond in 2016, and even though he lived in Sun City and he didn't have any kids in school, he was a proponent of quality schools and quality environments, and he and Mrs. Hamel spoke up and were very active in that, and just, you know, until he could no longer participate, they were both still giving back to their community.
We should probably adjourn in his memory.
I think it's a great idea.
Other, other reports, I mean, we don't have to, you can just adjourn in his memory and make...
Oh, Mr. Mayor, you didn't open up her final public comment.
You know, you're right. I didn't. Yeah, we'll have a second round of public comment on non-adjourned items. All right. Thank you for that. Yes, Councilman Albert?
Sorry, I wanted to be sure and say a couple things. Not that I don't want to go to bed like everybody else here. Today, we held a ribbon-cutting for the Pleasant Grove Wastewater Treatment Plant Expansion Project. Project, and this is very exciting, especially for those that live on the west side of town that have had to deal with odors on occasion over the past. This expansion includes digesters that take the nasty-smelling sludge that never now reaches open air and turns it into natural gas that actually fuels our solid waste, our garbage trucks, basically. So this is a really exciting expansion. It's very, very innovative, and it even produces electricity to help run the wastewater treatment plant. That's really exciting. I think just about all of us were at the dual park openings on Saturday. We had two more parks, Fourscore, Fourscore, Four Corners Park, and Audrey Husking Park, and she got to be there for that, and that was a lot of fun. I forgot the number, was it 82, 83?
83.
Three parks we have in the city now, that's awesome. Placer County Economic Development Board met up in Tahoe, and so we got to just kind of remind our whole, our different jurisdictions about the economic benefit of the far east side of the county as far as movie-making and outdoor sports and being a tourist attraction, also talking about some of the struggles they have. That was very interesting. We also had a ribbon-cutting. The mayor and I went to ribbon-cutting for Swinton, their BTEC group. It's a general contractor, and they built the huge new Adventist Health Building. That was one of their many projects, and so they've now moved that whole group to Roseville, so we're excited about that.
World headquarters, yeah.
Yeah, their world headquarters for their tech group. And then also, many of us attended, went to different fire stations for the 9/11, just brief memorial ceremony at each of them. It was quiet and kind of special, and just made you think and remember the, our first responders and the sacrifices that they're willing to make on our behalf, and so that was kind of humbling, and it was nice to be a part of that. That's all I have, and...
Great. Anybody else?
Maybe one real quick comment, because I think all of us did it, and it's just kind of nice for the community to know that we have a new Sac State president. His name is Luke Wood. He came to a function here in Roseville, put on with Placer County Office of Education and several other groups, and it was an opportunity to meet him, and, and he's also a Sac State graduate, and it was ironic, he went to school with Assemblyman Joe Patterson, so that was kind of nice. So welcome, Luke Wood, to Sac State and our region.
Yeah, and just to round out the evening, as I mentioned, when, when we're making the presentation to Mark Osnick on behalf of his father, we should hear in the next couple of days about the final funding allocation for the Third Track Project, and that will complete the funding of the program, so expect to hear something about that, you know, maybe Thursday, Friday, it will be formally announced, so, very promising. And with that, I think we'll go on to our next meeting, which is almost tomorrow. CACOG's tomorrow, right? So, thank you, everybody.